Good evening. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting, May 18th, our 229th regular meeting, at 6:31 PM at the John Zahn Center and Hybrid. This meeting is being recorded and videotaped by the City Council and GCTV-15. If any other persons present are doing the same...
Is the sound on for anyone?
Please notify me at this time.
Yes.
Okay, we have one there, Kathy.
Who was recording?
Who was recording? I'm sorry Kathy didn't get that.
Mary's recorder. Thank you, Mary.
Is there anyone else recording? Thank you. "No person shall address a meeting of the public body without permission of the Chair, and all persons shall, with the request of the Chair, be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a meeting of a public body. If after clear warning from the Chair a person continues to disrupt the proceedings, the Chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting, and if the person does not withdraw, the Chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting." Just a couple of updates before we do the roll call. So let's do the roll call and get us all in.
Counselor Jarvis.
Here.
Vice President Gwynn.
Here.
Counselor Disorder.
Here.
Counselor Bottomley.
Here.
Counselor Bullock.
Here. Here.
Thank you. President Gilmore. Counselor Lapinski.
Here.
Counselor Mayo.
Doug, can you hear us? You said hello before. Are you here?
Check to see if you're muted, Counselor Mayo.
I'll go back to him.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes.
Counselor Healy.
Here.
Counselor Elmer.
Here.
Counselor Forgie.
Here.
Counselor Ricketts.
Present.
Counselor Toranzo.
Here.
All members are present. You have a quorum, Vice President Gwynn.
Thank you. We'll stand for those that wish to for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the councilors, if you're going to speak, and when you speak, make sure your microphones are on. The reason being, with the hybrid system, it's even harder to hear. So if you're going to speak, please, even if it's a simple statement, make sure your microphones are on, and try to talk directly into your microphone so everyone can hear us and the hybrid functions properly. I'm going to ask that everyone direct all their questions to myself this evening, and we'll get everything moving. I would like to encourage this evening that we do our voting by show of hands. Obviously, if someone feels that they want a roll call vote for any reason, you have that option, but I'd really like to encourage everyone to do votes by a show of hands so we can continue to move the meeting along. I'm going to ask that when we get to the public comments this evening, that we try to limit our public comments to two minutes this evening, once again, to try to move things along a little bit. Also, if any of the communications of the mayor, city officers, superintendents, if you feel like you don't have anything that you have to share with us this evening, you won't hurt our feelings. So we are going to follow the rules of procedure tonight, so when we bring up a subject, each counselor will be recognized to talk on that subject. After everyone else has had the ability to speak, I can recognize you one more time. And the only exception to that would be if you're the Chair of a committee and you're answering questions or giving information based on your committee, once again, to try to get us to go through the meeting a little bit, not quicker, but more efficiently is probably the meeting because we have a large agenda. I think that's it for now. I just ask that everyone follow the order of the meeting, treat everybody like you like to be treated, and let's get through a big agenda. Approval of the April 20th minutes?
Second, Jarvis.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none? That moves us to the communications from the superintendent or school committee. There will be no representation this evening from the superintendent or the school committee. Thank you. Communications from the mayor or city officers?
Hello there.
The mayor is remote, but I hear your voice, but I see Counselor Mayo.
Oh, that's interesting. Well, here I am, and I do have a...I'm going to be brief. I'll take a few minutes of your time. On the good news front, I just want to make sure everybody saw or knows that Health Director Jennifer Hoffman has succeeded in getting a PCR testing center back up and running in Greenfield with the cooperation of Greenfield Community College and a testing company, Curative. I think I had that right. So it's a big thank you to everyone involved. It'll be in the East Building at GCC, same as it ever was, and we're really happy about that. And at last, the Lyden Glen Reservoir will begin to be dredged very soon. That's a project long in the making. And the only other thing I would like to say this evening is I'd like to offer a few words to you, the councilors, and to the public about the FY23 operating budget, which is on your agenda tonight. In creating the FY23 operating budget, which we did, I did, in collaboration with the department heads, we focused on a shared common purpose of providing a city budget that realistically maintains the services and programs for all Greenfield residents that we have come to rely on. The snow plowing in the winter, the parks and recreation programs that we have, many of the services, all the services that are provided in City Hall by the City Clerk's Office and the Tax Collector and Collector Treasurer. We focused on that purpose, and we did that in the environment of rapidly rising costs for goods and services, and while we also supported the negotiated cost of living increases for the city's valued employees. So the FY23 budget is not one that includes a lot of excessive requests in expenses or staffing. It is, in fact, the opposite. So although we are, as a city, slowly recovering from the adverse financial impacts of the pandemic, that recovery is helped along by finalizing our five-year property revow this early this year, we still face a lot of financial challenges for FY23. And those challenges are due to two primary budget drivers in your budget this evening. One is the salary and wage contractual obligations after finalizing three-year collective bargaining agreements with all city unions. The other is, across all departments, we are experiencing larger-than-usual increases in cost of goods and services, which we can't control, and are related directly to the pressures brought about by the pandemic. So at $58,329,672,000, the FY23 operating budget is already the result of significant reductions to be $774,816, to be exact. It was cut out of that budget before you got it, and that was coming largely from staff positions, primarily new positions. The budget represents a 3.35% increase over FY22, or 75 cents per thousand on the tax bill. Any further reductions in the budget will impact the many services provided by city employees to our taxpayers due to layoffs that would be forced by those reductions. Salaries and wages and all of the attendant benefits are the biggest parts of your budget. So that's all I have to say on the budget tonight. You have a full agenda. I won't be taking any questions tonight, but by all means, if you have further questions on anything, please feel free to email them to me. Thank you. I appreciate all the hard work you're going to do this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, moving on. Is there communications from any other city officer? I do not believe so. That brings us to public comment. I ask that when you step up to the microphone, that you state your name and your address for the record. We'll allow two minutes of speaking time, and then we'll move on. Michelle Delicio.
We're going to turn that microphone on and move that up for you soon.
Can you hear me? Yeah, good. Thanks. Hi, my name is Michelle Delicio. I have lived in my home in Greenfield since 1989. I've always thought of Greenfield as a town that puts people over profits. Please think of the people who live nearby on Country Club Road, from the youngest children to the seniors living out their retirement. Okay, that's just mine. And then the next person is Sarah Hannan. I'm going to just read her. She can't be here because her kids, her sons are playing in Greenfield Minor League Baseball. So Sarah Hannan lives at 481 Country Club Road. Her property is across the street from the proposed cultivation site, a stone's throw away, 30 feet away, if that. Her husband and she purchased this house 10 years ago. The appeal for the area of Greenfield was having only one direct neighbor and the great view across the street, the now proposed largest marijuana cultivation site on the East Coast. 10 years ago, we were told that this is a working farm and could never be built on. One of my children, my two sons, one's 12 and one's six, one of my children has environmental allergies that require daily medication throughout the year. The environmental conditions of this farm coming in will potentially pose a threat to the health of my children, as well as the children in the neighborhood living within close proximity. Drive down Country Club Road...whoops, sorry. Drive down Country Club Road at any given point during the day, and you will see folks of all kinds walking, running, and biking, enjoying the fresh air. All our children love to play outside, ride their bikes, swim in our pools. Unfortunately, they won't be able to be outside June through September during the peak growing harvesting months. Chemicals and pesticides, mold, and compromised air quality are all factors that contribute to our concerns. She asks that the City of Greenfield and its councilors pause and push for a complete review of the environmental consequences if this goes forward, and please, think of your citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Workafdek.
My name is Susan Workafdek. I live at 45 Forest Avenue in Greenfield. I wish to speak on the court case of Patrick Buchanan versus the City of Greenfield. The actions of the police are done in my name as a taxpayer. I would like to publicly apologize to Patrick Buchanan for the racism and the hostile work environment that he endured. As a citizen, I entrust the city officials whom I elect and who appoint their support units and those who are hired by those support units to carry their duties out in an ethical, even-handed, and professional manner. That did not happen here. The city should pay Mr. Buchanan's back salary and damages immediately. There should be no appeal. Enough is enough. The case documents also identify sexism and cronyism as central to the operations of the Greenfield Police. If you are a white officer who is male and connected to key people in town, you will never be seriously disciplined for using your office for your personal purposes, for intimidating citizens, for withholding evidence for several months, for being repeatedly intoxicated on duty, or for numerous other actions that, in any other type of employment, would get you fired. If you are a person of color or a woman, it does not matter how well you do on the department's required promotion criteria, your chances of being promoted are close to zero. The policies, procedures, including disciplinary and promotion procedures of the Greenfield Police must be completely reviewed by independent investigators, and the recommendations from that review be implemented. The overhaul of this department must start at the top. The City of Greenfield must fire Chief Hague and Sergeant McCarthy, and do it soon. This is not simply about the Greenfield Police. This is about who we are as a city and a community. We must face our responsibilities squarely, with resolve. The charge that this city tolerates racist behavior will not go away by itself. It will only be resolved if we make it happen. We are planning to put significant time and effort into money into downtown. If we are known as a city that tolerates racism, I believe the efforts will be wasted. This involves all of us. The first act is to live up to our responsibilities. No appeal. Fire Hague and McCarthy. Investigate the department. Start anew. Thank you.
Next is David Sherm, and following him will be Laura Jordan.
My name is David Sherm, 375 Barton Row, Greenfield. This grow on Country Club Road is too close to the houses and will use 3% to 5% of the daily water supply from the city. Multiply that by 17 proposed grows, and you will use 70% of the city's daily water supply. Add to all this the physical plant associated with these grows of massive buildings, chain-linked fences topped with razor wire, lights, and armed guards, a veritable prison camp where the victims will be on the outside looking in. Make no mistake, the residents of this area will be the victims imprisoned in their own homes, unable to enjoy their yards for fresh air. Will you allow this to happen, to be complicit in destroying the environment and the quality of life for a large number of residents in the city? We would like to know how this happened. What are the chain of events that have led us to this moment and who is accountable? Why weren't the residents adequately informed to be able to voice their concerns, and we are clearly concerned? The citizens of this city have put their trust in you and other officials, but we have no idea what the plan is for developing this community. Is it to establish grow fields wherever there's a bit of open space and sandwich residents in between? Who is profiting? As board members, you have a responsibility to inform yourselves about all the issues regarding proposals, and we, as citizens, have to be kept informed. This issue has demonstrated that something has been lacking, and we need to fix it.
Laura Jordan. And then following Laura will be Carissa Clifford.
My name is Laura Jordan. I live at 9 Elm Terrace in Greenfield. I am presently serving as an officer on the Elm Terrace Tenants Association, and I'm here today to bring to your attention the fact, pardon me, the fact that we have more than 100 senior and disabled residents living at Elm Terrace, who, for the most part, must get their groceries conveniently at Foster's. If you are familiar with the area, you know it's a very short walk from Elm Terrace to Foster's. However, if you happen to be someone who has mobility challenges, walking with a cane, walking with a walker, having a motorized scooter, you will find that the pavement on the sidewalk on Columbus Avenue renders it a challenge and a tripping hazard to try to get your groceries every week. I'd like to urge the councilors to support the repair of the sidewalk on Columbus Avenue so that our elders and our disabled people are no longer challenged by trying to get their groceries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Carissa Clifford. I live at 390 Mohawk Trail. Tonight, I'm going to comment on our individual property rights. At the recent joint meeting of the EDC and the Planning Board, I commented that there is a current MO for the city to implement the master plan objectives. Bring as little attention as possible to the agenda items, obtain the money or promise of money, and then open it up to the public to make it appear as though we have real input, when the truth is, we don't. It's working for the city, so the only thing we can do as residents is to get ahead of these plans. So I'm giving you and the public a heads-up as to what will be coming down the pike. There is a proposed plan underway from FERCOG that is a total assault on our individual property rights. We currently have a zoning ordinance in place, Chapter 200, Article 7.1, titled "Open Space Cluster Development." In that ordinance, urban, suburban, and rural residential zoning districts require that 25% of the total land area of one's property remain in its natural state. At the January 20th, 2022 Planning Board meeting, it was discussed to amend that ordinance to increase the required open space from 25% to 70%. So what does that look like? At the same meeting, Director Tuarog stated, quote, "If someone comes along and offers a farmer this much money so he doesn't have to do succession, he's going to take it and develop it into residential lots, all of his land." So this ordinance is going to protect 70% of that space when they do the subdivision. He specifically mentioned farmers, but remember, the ordinance includes rural, urban, and suburban properties. So think about this for a moment. I own a 10-acre parcel of land. I pay my taxes every year, and I keep 25% of the property untouched. I decide that I want to subdivide it, and the city's going to tell me that 75% of the land I own, I pay for, and I pay taxes on, is completely under their control. So what's the reasoning behind this? And you're going to love this one. At the same meeting, Director Tuarog stated, and I quote, "We're talking about the future. Right now, there is no development pressure on our farmland and our outlying areas. But let's say the sea rises three feet, and people on the coast need to move into the interior. It will put pressure on all of our agricultural land." So are you kidding me? They want to give the city rights to 75% of my land in case the sea rises three feet? I don't think the government should have any control of our land aside from things like road easements, maybe that kind of a thing. But okay, since 2016, they've taken away our rights to 25% of our land. They do not have the right to increase that any higher, to any higher percentage, not 30%, not even 26%. So I'm asking the public to let your friends and neighbors know about these plans, and I'm asking you, as councilors, to veto any changes to this ordinance when they come down the pike. And please make sure that you are always thinking about protecting your constituents' individual property rights. It's a fundamental principle of freedom. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Richard Peel-Pow. And then following him is David Cohen.
Hi, my name's Rick Pelk, and I live at 701 Country Club Road, and I'm going to be commenting on the Cosmesca Farm property. That farm is in an APR, which is an agricultural preservation restriction. The program's designed to pay the farmer money so that it protects the farmland, but that's a partnership. It's supposed to benefit both the farmer and mass residents. Should both be benefited by the program. Their quality of life, scenic beauty, clean air, water, wildlife habitat, maybe even recreational opportunities. The APR comes with restrictions. If you look at the restrictions on this piece of land, it says no asphalt driveway, road, parking lot, temporary or permanent structures, utility poles, towers, or conduits. That's the intent. Basically, nothing wasteful to natural resources. That can be changed, of course, as anything can be, with approval of some kind of stewardship planner. The Mass Department of Agricultural Resources, known as the M DAR, acknowledges that, on their website, the statutes regarding pot growing on APR lands are ambiguous, and it says, "But they will use their discretion to resolve." I fail to see what public benefits are to be had in this situation. I don't see that anybody really gets anything from there. You know, this is all new territory. It's still being tested. It's still illegal at the federal level, and at a minimum, I think the project should be put on the shelf until it has a chance for full review. Whatever you rule, you're going to set a precedent in this town. Greenfield has a choice. They don't have to allow pot growing here. Pot growing doesn't benefit financially the way a dispensary would to a town, and the taxes, and so on. And this doesn't even address situations like property values, or health, or safety. And if you look at towns like Hatfield, they did a zoning revision to their bylaws, which placed a restrictive distance of 500 feet from residential homes. There's a lot that hasn't been addressed yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. After we recognize David, we are going to virtually recognize Kim Babino and Robyn Tibbetts, so we'll go to virtual, and then we'll come back.
Hi, my name is David Cohen, 335 Green River Road in Greenfield, and I would like to address the situation with the Greenfield Police Department. And to keep it short, I would say that I endorse the remarks of Susan Workafdek. I think that laid it out very well. But I would like to remind folks that this is not an isolated case and seems to be part of an ongoing pattern. In 2015, the town had to settle a case for wrongful arrest, settled it for $32,500. In January 17th, 2015, the Greenfield Recorder reported that the town... In January 17, 2015, the Greenfield Recorder reported that the town had to settle another lawsuit because police, nine police were named in the case, tasered one person, Oliver Rich, when they were trying to arrest him. And it was considered to be an unlawful arrest. The town had to settle for $87,000. So in that same newspaper article, Mayor Martin said, "The town started really looking at police procedures and policies." He said the lawsuit filed by Rich was one of about four or five brought against the police department at the same time. I have to say, I don't know how those cases were settled, whether the city also had to pay money to settle those cases. I think we all know that at that time, the word was that then-police chief Gilbo was a proponent of aggressive policing. That is, that the police should be aggressive when they're arresting people and stopping people for traffic violations. He retired at that point. I see this continuation. Then in 2015, Sergeant Dan McCarthy of the Confederate Flag Fame complained that another police officer, Police Officer Buchanan, didn't give someone a ticket for a traffic violation. It seems to me what we have going on here is a continuation of some of the police wanting to return to this aggressive-type policing in Greenfield that led to the town having to pay out a lot in lawsuits. I think there are other people who'll speak more to the case around Police Officer Buchanan, but I have to say, as a taxpayer, I do not want to keep paying to settle cases for wrongdoing by the Greenfield Police. As a taxpayer, I do not want my money used to defend racist actions by the Greenfield Place. And as a taxpayer in Greenfield, I don't think we should be returning to the illegal methods that were used by the Greenfield Place that resulted in court cases and the city having to pay out money to people for wrongful actions of the police. I endorse the call for an open investigation of the police, and we need to have an open public discussion on policing, how policing is done in Greenfield, and what we as citizens of Greenfield want our police to do. I should also mention-
If you're wrapping up, David-
I'm wrapping up right here. But some of the same police officers and Sergeant McCarthy, in 2018, there was an incident when the Greenfield nurses were going on strike, and the president of the Nurses Union tried to enter the hospital lawfully, and she was manhandled by the police officers and shoved around and shoved out, not allowed to enter the hospital. Those actions by the Greenfield Police violated federal law. I think we really need, as a city, to take control of our police and change the way policing is done in Greenfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Virtually, I'd like to recognize Kim Babino and then Robin Tibbetts, virtually.
Hi, my name is Kim Babino. I live on Country Club Road in Greenfield. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. At the EDC meeting on May 10, I spoke to some of you about one of my concerns regarding the marijuana facility slated for Country Club Road. The concern I spoke about was the high water usage that these facilities need to operate. Because of global warming, climate change, and our ever-growing populations, the demand for fresh water is only going to continue to increase. Projections I've seen show that this demand is projected to increase by 55% between the year 2000 and 2050. Water is something many of us take for granted. We turn on our faucets and clean water flows, but this vital resource, a resource we need to live, is quickly becoming a commodity. Yes, a commodity, just like oil or gold, trading of water on Wall Street has already begun. Our aquifers are important and should be protected. Water scarcity hinders economic growth. It's a reality. Please take a look at the water usage stated on the last page of the Leiden Road Plan and do the math out. Remember that figure I mentioned on the 10th? Six gallons of water per day per plant, according to the Cannabis Control Commission? Compare that to the water usage you get based on the daily water usage on their plan. You're going to find these numbers are very different. I calculate out that with a plant every four square feet, their stated 2,300 gallon per day usage would mean that each of their plants are only using 0.09 gallons of water a day. 0.09 of a gallon. This amount might cover evaporation, maybe, but really, why is it so far off from the six gallons the CCC states? To press that point even further, please tally up the water usage that would be used by the 400,000-square-foot canopies between the Leiden Road and Country Club Road facilities. My math shows this is in the range of 600,000 gallons to over 1 million gallons of water per day. This needs to be investigated, and we need to understand the impact this will have now and in the future to both us and the wetlands and wildlife in the area. This includes the rare wildlife area near McCord Brook that GIS maps show that would surely be affected if the integrity of the aquifer was compromised. Thank you for your time tonight, and please do reach out to me if you can explain to me why the water usage is so far off from what the CCC clearly states is required. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Robin Tibbetts.
Next is Robin Tibbetts. Once again, state your name and your address for the record. I ask everyone to try to maintain the two minutes we asked for. At the end of two minutes, when that buzzer goes off, we reset it, and if you hear it again, that's another 10 seconds, if you're wondering where that's coming from. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Hi, I'm Robin Tibbetts. I just wanted to address to everyone how us who live on Country Club Road, we've lived on Country Club Road since 2003. My husband Bruce is behind me. We have severe concerns about a growing plant down the road. A lot of people at McCord Acres have just invested a lot of money and a lot of time getting their neighborhoods set up down there. There's a lot of families with small children. I understand that. The neighborhood property values will definitely decrease. I don't understand all of the zoning laws, and I haven't done my homework like everyone else, and thank you guys for doing that with the waters, yes, but I'm really concerned about the wildlife also. There are so many animals that are living in the area that you cannot understand how hard an impact this is going to be pushing them. Also, I want to thank my passionate neighbors who are helpful in educating us, because I myself have gotten a lot of information about this. And it's, like I said, it's very confusing to me, but one of my biggest concerns is the traffic. Do we have an underpass? And big trucks cannot go underneath that underpass, so we're going to be having a lot of big, heavy trucks going by, back and forth and back and forth if we are right on the drag. And trust me, the traffic already is a problem. So I appreciate that anyone and everyone who can and will speak out about this. I appreciate it, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Al Collins, and then Diane Colleen. Al, when you come up, just turn the microphone back on. The speaker for virtual is right above the microphone, so it backfeeds through the speaker when that happens. So if you could just turn it back on.
Good evening. Good evening. And thank you for having, listening to me and taking the time. I'm Al Collins, and I live at 527 Country Club Road, and I'm directly across the road from the proposed outdoor cultivation of 300,000-square-foot grows of cannabis, which is approximately, if anyone doesn't know what that looks like, it's like 5.2 football fields in size, and that's just the green canopy, just the growth, not the structures and the fencing and all that, and buffers, round fences, whatnot. So it's considerable in size. I'm asking the council tonight to consider, to reinstate, the Tier 1, 5,000-square-foot limit on outdoor cultivations that was previously on. That size limit was, you probably well know, was added into our Greenfield zoning ordinance back in 2018, and then removed in 2021. And this removal of any tier limit language from our zoning ordinance in 2021 left us wide open to the land grab, green rush thing that's going on now. The city needs to protect its citizens and not allow them to be overrun by these large grows. And they are coming. Please give this limitation a minute, some very serious consideration. And the citizens are extremely upset. And I've had a couple, yesterday when I was out canvassing, that said, they were talking about putting their homes up for sale because of it. They just, they weren't going to be able to tolerate it, so. They feel that this administration, as well as the previous, had thrown them under the bus, basically, and they can't, for the life of them, understand the reasoning that these folks that are entrusted with their better interests, where they came up with it. But that was putting it mildly. I guess I'm trying to be polite tonight, I guess. And I'll leave it at that, though. So please, really, take some serious considerations to put that Tier 1 limit back in for the time being, and then we can go on and amend the rest of the deficits and that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Diane Colleen, followed by William Johnson.
My name is Diane Colleen. I live at 748 Country Club Road, and I've been there for 45 years. Born and raised in Greenfield, I chose to stay as an adult and raise our three children in the north end of town. How our peaceful, quiet neighborhood is.
As ended up promised to the highest marijuana grow in the state troubles me. My feelings are summed up by this quote by D.A. Baile. Just because you have the right to do something doesn't make it the right thing to do. This I've mulled over ever since I found out about this proposed marijuana grow. Please, Council, do the right thing on behalf of 135 homes in my neighborhood.
William Johnson, and then followed by Brian Hoffman.
My name is William Johnston. I live at 37 Verde Drive, Greenfield, Mass. Longtime resident. I'm coming to you in regards to the marijuana facility that they're talking about at 446. Many concerns for me, legality. We're really in a place that we're learning. This is happening much quicker than we realize, and we're going to set precedence. You know, growing up in South Deerfield, we had a lot of smells, and remediation's probably my biggest concern. If someone wants to make money, they own land, it's their right, and I understand that. It shouldn't affect my quality of life. I own a small business. I have children in school. The smell, as I talked to the mayor, she said there's no scientific... I would love to know what she said. I won't quote, but we know it's going to smell. That's what happens. If the school across the street from my business had marijuana in it and they could remediate it, and someone's making money, I understand, as a business owner, you have to. But the remediation, you know, South Deerfield has done a lot of things with odors. We have precedents for odors. Please consider what's going to happen with water usage. We have water main breaks on Country Club regularly, on Country Club Road. The smell during this time of the year with private school students going to Stonely Burnham that will smell this, it might affect their things. There's so many reasons that this needs a moratorium or some more information. We really need to slow down and make the right move here. One Tier 11 is one thing, three Tier 11s is another. We should really think about it before we move hastily and make the wrong move. Thank you for listening.
Brian Hoffman, followed by Barbara Morris.
Thank you, everybody. My name is Brian Hoffman. I live at 345 Barton Road, just around the corner and down the road from this proposed marijuana facility, which is what I'll be speaking opposed to today. And mainly, what I'm worried about is the smell. And I want to distinguish between what happens to property values near dispensaries and property values near growing facilities, because they're different, and that should be distinguished. I'm sure that all of you distinguished councilors would have trouble selling your house if you had to disclose to a buyer that for three months out of the year, the living room was filled with the heady smell of cannabis. And that's what we're worried about in this neighborhood. A 2008 survey by the National Association of Realtors found that 12% to 14% reported a decrease in values of properties proximate to marijuana-growing facilities. A 2016 report, a resident adjacent to a Washington marijuana farm was unable to keep his windows open, and the Spokane County assessor decreased his property value by 10%. In 2018, according to a New York Times article, residents of Sonoma County, north of San Francisco, decided to sue to ban additional cannabis operations from their neighborhoods. Mendocino County farther north recently created zones banning cannabis cultivation. Sheriff deputy there says the stink is his number-one complaint. Immediate neighbors wear respirators, and in Carpentaria, high school students have complained of headaches, and the school has to warn visiting sports teams that their athletes may smell marijuana while they're playing baseball. In 2019, Pocono's marijuana-growing facility in the town of Whitehaven smells so intensely that neighbors can't open their windows during the three months of flowering season. And what I want to know is, is city leadership going to pretend that this stuff doesn't happen? I think we should learn from these examples and from the biased studies that may be given to us, we heard about a water one, instead of salivating too eagerly at the prospect of revenue gained from the number-one cash crop of our time. 10 seconds. So I basically want to know if this is really a done deal, or if this is what it feels like, which is a highly-funded, highly-strategic operation by out-of-state operators who created an in-state LLC with insider help from the city to navigate the legal landscape and sort of pull a bait and switch. So I just want at least to put the pause on this project so we can have dispassionate observation and analysis, and then involvement of the community that's going to host this massive operation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Morris, and then Dorothy MacGyver.
My name is Barbara Morris. I live at 741 Country Club Road, and I am reading for Sandy Kosterman, who is unable to be here, she lives on Barton Road. The three proposed Tier 11 cannabis outdoor growing facilities on Country Club Road in a residential neighborhood with over 135 homes and hundreds of residents are going to have a negative impact on residents' quality of life due to the smell and unsightly fencing. The plants and fencing cannot be hidden by shrubs since the slope of the land drops down from the road, and it will be visible by people driving by in cars, trucks, and bikes. Also, the Cannabis Control Commission does not allow shrubs to be planted around the fencing, contrary to what was told to attendees at the one and only outreach meeting. Resale value of the homes in the area will go down, and the small amount of 3% that the town thinks it's going to gain in local option sales tax is not going to compensate home orders for lower resale values and any negative impacts on their quality of life when they can't be outside to enjoy- when they can't be outside to enjoy their property and open the windows. Pittsfield outlawed all future outdoor cannabis cultivation due to negative impact on residents. There are rumors of other cannabis projects coming to town. There needs to be a moratorium on all cannabis cultivation proposals planned in Greenfield so that this project and all projects which affect everyone in town, everyone in town, can be studied and input given by residents. The water usage alone for this project and the one on Lyden Road, which is visible from Country Club Road, approaches a million gallons a day. Our town officials need to look into how this is going to affect all Greenfield residents, and there should be a public hearing before a host agreement is signed. Greenfield needs to establish the setback requirements to 500 feet, for currently we have no setback requirements, for cannabis cannibies from all nearby homes. Our city council needs to make sure the zoning laws are rewritten if the council truly represents their constituents. Do you think that large-scale pot farms are going to attract the kind of good business that will be beneficial to Greenfield? Will they encourage families with children to move to Greenfield? And is it what you want us to be known for? It sends the wrong message to our youth and any businesses who are thinking of moving here. Residents are upset that these projects will benefit the out-of-state developers but are not going to lower our taxes in Greenfield or benefit taxpayers in any way. In fact, this proposed project will be detrimental to all Greenfield residents.
Thank you, Barbara. Next is Dorothy McGyver. Then we are going to go virtual to Rachel Gordon in Armani Mangosian.
Hi, I'm Dorothy McGyver. I live at 88 Columbus Ave here in Greenfield. I forgot my written notes, but Susan and David have said a lot that it doesn't need to be said again in terms of all the statistics, statistics. I do want to say that I did read the entire court document of this trial, and had the jury ruled in favor of the police department, I would say, appeal it. But they did their job. They did a thorough job. They went, and it's very clear that what's been happening here has been going on for a long time. I've lived in Greenfield since 1993 now. I've worked with families in the area. I've heard of a lot of situations where people were targeted, and this needs to stop. Back when Daniel McCarthy was on the Human Rights Commission, which I have no idea how he managed to get on that to begin with, and then he had the Confederate flag in his garage, and nothing happened after that. It's just, you know, never-ending, and this can't, this has to stop. We cannot appeal this. That cannot happen. The jury spoke, they did their job, and it stands. And we need to take action now, have investigations. We need to make sure that we do not allow racism to continue in our police department, and we need to make sure that we get people hired who have training and who are not going to be perpetuating what's been happening here, because this cannot go on. This is not who we are in our community, and this is not a good example, and we need to end it now. And I guess that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Gordon.
Can you hear me?
We can now, Rachel.
Great, thank you. Good evening. My name is Rachel Gordon. I live on Eastern Avenue in Precinct Two, and thank you particularly for taking comments from those of us on Zoom. That is greatly appreciated. I'm here to urge you to respond in the strongest possible terms to the jury finding that Chief Hague and the city of Greenfield are guilty of racist discrimination. And I believe that Chief Hague and Sergeant McCarthy should be fired from their positions immediately, and I very much believe that our police department budget could easily and should be reduced by at least a million dollars. You all have a chance today to send a message that Greenfield will not tolerate racial discrimination, particularly from the highest levels of our city government, and that it's time that we stop throwing money away into expensive policing programs that don't make us safer and into a department whose leadership broke the law and is now costing Greenfield taxpayers easily more than a million dollars by the time this case is over. Greenfield cannot afford this, either fiscally or the image that we are now projecting to the world. This is a deep stain on our community. I know that the council cannot decide anything about personnel or whether we appeal this case, but you can make budget decisions, and budgets are a reflection of our values. I really hope that your decisions on this budget reflect the values of a community that takes a firm stand against racism, that believes in real accountability, and that is willing to make changes and try new things when it's very clear that the status quo is not beneficial to our community. I will close by asking you, if someone asks you in a few years how you responded to racist policing and discrimination in Greenfield, what would you want to tell them? Would you want to say that you kept funding business as usual? Or would you want to say, I took meaningful action? Would you want to say that you chose to be part of the problem or part of the solution? I hope that you'll make a choice tonight that both you and Greenfield can be proud of. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. Armani, are you on?
Yes, yes, I am. Hi, thank you so much for taking the time to hear me. I'm here with my husband Ted Hinman, and we live on Petty Plain Road in Greenfield, right across from the Fair Browns. And last year, we went to an information meeting with Jim Olson, who is running the Green River Festival, and he basically told us that we, you know, we don't have a choice. If the music gets loud, I wanted a way to be able to reach him. He said that he would not be accessible and that the music would not be turned down. The music started at 8:00 in the morning and went until 11, past 11:00 at night. My entire house, I had everything closed, I had the AC going, and my whole house was vibrating. Now, he thinks he's giving an incentive by giving like a free ticket, you know? I don't need a free ticket. I can sit in my house and hear all that music. But it's not even, it's not even the music, it's the amps that they use that are just pounding into my house. I have very ill elderly animals, and it's just, it's just not respectful. Jim Olson is from Northampton, and he's not respectful. He came up late in the middle of a pandemic with no mask on. I'm wearing a mask, and he walks up to like six inches of my face. And then he just, you know, we had to call the police. I called the mayor, the police told us to call the mayor's office on Monday morning. We called the mayor's office on Monday morning, the mayor's office, the assistant to the mayor. All she did was defend Jim Olson and saying what a nice, respectful guy he is. He is not respectful. One of the, one of the things he said to the residents living in the neighborhood that showed up for the meeting is that, well, we're not putting on hip-hop music. And I said, well, we're not racist, we're not afraid of African-American people being in our neighborhood. We just don't want to hear like music blasting into our houses. Now, we received another notice this year. It's like the mayor's office absolutely does not care that we're homeowners, that we pay our real estate taxes, and that we, we should be respected for being able to have some, some peace and quiet, some peace and quiet. It's not fair. And then the assistant said, would you like to be put on a list of people to be reached for comment? And I said, yes, and nobody ever reached out to us. So the town ignores us, Jim Olson ignores us, the police can't do anything about it. And then he says in this letter that, oh, he didn't know that the PA system was going to be so big, the company didn't know. Well, when they came out with the equipment to set it up, they should have known that it was a residential neighborhood. They were driving here to set it up. They saw what was, what was here.
Armani, thank you.
And so, yeah, and I would really appreciate, if we're given an opportunity to have a say when we're going to have like 10,000 people across from us, it would be really, it would really be helpful in a very small area.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and I do support people for the police in our town not to be racist. Thank you.
Nancy, Nancy McGyver, followed by John. Maggie?
Nancy McGyver, 20 Plantation Circle in Greenfield. I speak tonight to state we need a moratorium to consider further zoning on cannabis cultivation. An excellent example is this in Williamstown, which is a right-to-farm community, who in June 2021 passed new zoning for cannabis. The planning board was asked by the Zoning Board of Appeals for more guidelines for cannabis business. Stephanie Boyd, the Planning Board Chair, described in an article written by Joseph Landis for WMAC Northeast Public Radio how they derived at new zoning guidelines after months of research. They set 150 to 200 feet setbacks from the road, but 500 feet from any residence. They also required fencing to be screened with vegetation and that the best available technology be used to limit odor. There is also additional restrictions as well. And this is a quote from the article which really kind of brought it all together for me. "The agricultural commission has worked with the planning board for the past 18 months to develop this bylaw, which is very protective for neighbors," said farmer and agriculture commission member Brian Cole. "The licensing process through the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission and the permitting process through Williamstown Zoning Board of Appeals provides many safeguards. Farms are businesses, and they are only viable as long as they are profitable." Article 29, which is their article that they approved, allows farmers a fair opportunity to diversify their businesses through cannabis cultivation while protecting neighbors with large setbacks and screening. I believe we can do the same thing in Greenfield, but we need a moratorium to accomplish this. You may say we do not need a moratorium because zoning can be updated without that, but we don't want another neighborhood to be impacted while we're waiting for this to happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then Wendy Goodman following that.
Thank you for your hard work on the budget and for your attention to our concerns. Others have spoken well tonight on the well-known racism of the...
I'm sorry, can you just state your name and address for the record?
John McGee, 14 Green Street. Thank you. So others have spoken well tonight on the well-known racism of the GPD and Lieutenant McCarthy in particular, who has a whole history of his own. Tonight, we say enough, nothing about us, without us. We pay for the police, they act in our names. We have the power and the responsibility to change them. Cops should not and cannot lead that change. As to where we're going to go from here as a city, I want to share some important points. More training is pointless. Cops don't want it. It's expensive. It doesn't reduce arrests or improve outcomes for the community and certainly doesn't build racial justice. Number two, no more community policing. If the cops have a bad reputation, it's because of wrongdoing and because they do more than they should. Community policing expands the police. The right thing to do is to shrink them. Keep them just to those roles that we don't have better options for. Reduce their footprint so fewer people get dragged into the criminal legal system, DCF, and so on. This is the only way to reduce the harms of policing, which fall disproportionately on people of color. Number three, acknowledge our community needs and shift our resources to respond to them. Even CIT, the National Police Trainers on Mental Health, which Massachusetts DMH uses for all cop de-escalation training in the state, says that mental health and substance abuse emergencies should not lead with a police response, not even with a social worker present. Civilian only. But that's what we have. Across the country, across our state, and even right here in the valley, we have community care organizations built with the leadership of the people who are most harmed by policing, and they offer real paths forward. Tonight, I'm asking you to cut a million bucks from the GPD, and let's save it to invest in real, community-led solutions. Let's get rid of McCarthy and Hague.
Wendy, followed by Mariana.
Good evening. I'm Wendy Goodman. I live on Green River Road, and I want to thank you all for your service. I actually timed this to be three minutes because that's what it's been before, so I will do my best to cut this down as it works. It saddens me to be here tonight. It was bad enough to know that our city has a reputation of being racist, to know black folks in town that have felt the abuse of the chief's power and fear him and the force he leads that is supposed to protect us all. But even more disheartening is that when such discrimination finally comes to light through our courts with a jury recognizing such racist behavior, rather than acknowledging that there's a problem, our leadership chooses to deny and appeal that decision. A decision that confirms what so many of us have known about but didn't know how to deal with. The most discouraging aspect of this case is that our leadership, rather than seeking to understand and improve, is seeking to deny the allegations, or should I say, the reality we find ourselves in. We're better than this. It's certain that this is not the only case of racism by our police force. It's just the only one that's made it to the court, and the court has spoken. It's been determined that we have a problem, and while it may be, quote, "business as usual," to appeal such a decision, these days require not doing business as usual. Does it not make sense to explore and remedy the problem rather than trying to defend against and deny the problem exists? We've become a society that's about winning the game, especially to save money or face, and manipulating the rules to do so disregarding the reason they were put in place. So much for the concept of fair play. To do so in this instance, to deny this determination, sets up a lose-lose scenario where no one wins, not the police and not this community. Whether or not there was or is intentional racial animus is no longer the issue. What we do about it is. Coming off a weekend of yet another mass shooting with black folks being targeted, we are called to be our best selves, not our normal selves. People don't feel safe. Black people don't feel safe. I don't feel safe, knowing that we would rather be right than do the work that needs to be done. We are in a time of massive change and upset, reassessment of ways of being and acting that have been created and often institutionalized over years by the white men who had power to do so is occurring as never before. We're not alone in recognizing that the way our police force functions and has functioned, unfortunately, often goes against the long-held sacred belief that, quote, "all people are created equal." That's not what we're seeing in this town. I'd suggest that any monies that would go into an appeal be applied to changing the culture of our police force. I'm not going to call for the firing of the chief and Sergeant McCarthy. I would call for their demotion, for sure. We should not have leadership in this town that has a reputation for racism. Studies show that changing the culture of an organization takes an average of five years. It's not an easy fix, even more challenging due to the nature of the police force and its public face. But this is what must be done. If not now, when? If not us, who? I call for a community process that involves everybody in the community and what we want our police force to be and how we get there. Crisis is both danger and hidden opportunity. We're in crisis. Let us pursue and realize the opportunity that is inherent in this situation. Please, don't deny, let's rectify.
Thank you. And then we are going to go virtually to Benjamin Minor and Robin Tibbetts.
Hi, I'm Mariana Ritchie. I live at 35 Beach Street. I know that the council can't make personnel decisions, and I know that you can't stop the mayor from undertaking this outrageous appeal. What I'm asking you to do is something that is in your power right now, and that is to cut the GPD's budget by a million dollars. Think of all of the amazing things that we could do with a million dollars. We could create housing, we could distribute food, we could start a free clinic, we could fund a civilian-led crisis response team, all things that would make everyone in our town safer and happier. But even if we spent it on nothing, even if we threw it into the ocean, I would consider it better spent than if we just kept giving it to these terrifying, out-of-control cops so they can drive drunk, run over pedestrians, target and harass people of color, leave unsecured firearms lying around, and of course discriminate against their only black colleague. It's time for our town leaders to commit to the simple principle that John McGee just uttered, nothing about us, without us. Whether we're talking about sticking a huge pot farm next to somebody's home or making or making people unable to get groceries because we choose not to direct resources towards maintaining the sidewalk, or addressing the housing crisis by arresting people for being homeless, the issue is the same. Decisions about our lives and our money are being made without our input or our consent. The mayor doesn’t know what’s good for us, we know what’s good for us, and we should be the ones determining the solutions to our problems and the allocation of our resources. I urge the council to take a step toward this future today by cutting the GPD’s budget by a million dollars and redirecting that money into the community itself where it can actually start solving our problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Benjamin Minor? Benjamin, are you there?
Hi, am I audible?
You, you are?
Okay.
Your name and address for the record, please?
Benjamin Minor, 284 Chapman Street. The trial records in the recently decided case against Greenfield Police Department show not just a clear pattern of racist discrimination, but also of recklessness, intimidation, proneness, and almost unthinkable abuses of power. If the city of Greenfield were to allow an appeal to the jury’s verdict, that would be a slap in the face to every person who lives here. Police officers are given immense power, yet we see over and over again, when that power is abused, police are given every second and third chance to escape facing any consequences for that abuse. We currently have a system where police officers are not held to an exceptional standard despite being given exceptional power. We have seen the result: vehicular manslaughter, retribution against citizen complaint, drunkenness on duty, prominent display of a hate symbol with no penalty and the offending officer being promoted, abuses of power which are sadly run-of-the-mill examples compared to the worst cases one could point to in the United States. People entrusted with immense power need to be held to an immensely high standard of accountability, full stop. McCarthy should have been fired years ago. Hague should have been fired by now as well. The entire department needs to be reviewed and someone from outside it and outside law enforcement needs to be authorized to put their house in order. This is no time to be allocating any more than the minimum operating budget necessary to maintain the Greenfield Police Department. As so many are already pointing out, we can do so much more and better with the money we’ve been wasting on their wish lists. It is high time the Greenfield Police were shown that they work for this city, not the other way around. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin or Bruce Tibbetts? Are you there? Are you muted? I’m going to move on, and if you are there, just let me know afterwards. Michael? Mastro Tara? It was always Mastro, so... Yeah. Are you there, virtually? If not, maybe we have a virtual glitch? Oh, Robin spoke earlier, so maybe Bruce, maybe they were on twice. I got that one. How about Michael? Are you there, Mike? Okay, I’m going to move back to the people present, and if someone’s here, let me know. Pamela Goodwin, followed by Molly Merritt?
Good evening. Pamela Goodwin, 54 High Street. Two minutes, huh? Thank you for your service, councilors. I don’t envy your position and I honor how hard you all work. This was a town when I was born here, and all the many years that I have taught in this area, in the city itself, in Northfield, Charlemont, Turners Falls, Stonely Burnham, I could go on and on of all the places I have taught. I also want to say that in about 1980, an eighth-grade Caucasian child had been expelled from the middle school, unless it was at junior high, I have to think. He was protecting little black children, it turned out. He was expelled for the entire school year because of pulling a knife, and the superintendent, I taught that kid, tutored him the entire year, in the next door to the superintendent of schools. So yes, racism is here, it has been here, and I want to honor what Susan W. and a few others have said. I read in all of the smaller towns in the newspaper. I used to live in small towns. I love select boards. I love town meetings, and that democratic process is what I’m seeing across the board in paper after paper in recent times. It saddens me to see that this city, and I call it a wannabe city, it still has a small-town feel, people still say, “I like the small-town-ness of it,” and this city government seems to lately, over the years and months, I’ve been here now, back in the city for three years, it seems to be ignoring the will of its citizens. I can no longer read the My Turns. It makes my stomach turn. I have been making public comments for these three years. There’s the pot field, the lunt cleanup mess over here, affordable housing that I’ve been seeking for years. As a former homeless person, we have archaic zoning board things. I don’t see anything really moving forward where it belongs, and people in the town are getting more and more upset. We don’t have time to attend Ways and Means and the zoning board and the Board of Health. We need some kind of say in what’s going on in the city government. Thank you.
Molly?
Hi, councilors. I’m Molly Merritt, 30 Solar Way. My notes are on my phone, so that’s why I’m looking at my phone. So I’m here tonight because you all are going to be voting on the operating budget for fiscal year 2023, and I’m asking you to cut at least a million dollars from the Greenfield Police Department budget. The mayor’s proposed 2023 GPD operating budget at nearly $4 million is proportionately much larger than other towns in our area and contains many questionable line items. Other departments in our city are chronically underfunded and understaffed, while the Greenfield Police has historically been overfunded, overstaffed, and wasteful of our town’s limited resources. So as other folks have been discussing now, the Greenfield Police Department and the city have been hit with a, in the end, probably million-dollar racial discrimination lawsuit brought by a former police officer who was unfairly treated because he’s black. And instead of heeding this wake-up call and listening as the community calls for drastic change, the mayor is doubling down with an expensive appeal and trying to prevent details from reaching the public. We know that policing does not keep us safe, and we know that policing upholds white supremacy and causes disproportionate harm to poor people and people of color. These facts on their face should be enough to motivate us to slash the amount of money we spend on policing and redirect it to things that actually contribute to a thriving, safe community, things like affordable housing, affordable and accessible healthcare, including mental health and addiction care, and access to healthy food. The Buchanan case and the deep racism and corruption it belies in the Greenfield Police Department is an alarm bell we can’t ignore. We need to take action. Let’s start by cutting the bloated police budget. Then let’s move to a public-led process of envisioning what community safety actually looks like, and let’s restructure subsequent years’ operating budgets to reflect this vision. Thank you for your service and for your time.
Thank you. Going back to the virtual, did Michael show up? Did Michael, are you on there, Michael? Okay, how about Doug Salwen? Doug?
Yeah, I’m here. Can you hear me?
Yes. Just your name and your address for us, please?
Yeah, Doug Salwen, 38 Forest Avenue in Greenfield. I want to talk about the police situation. We know and have heard that white nationalists and white supremacists have sort of infiltrated police departments across the country. I don’t know how deeply it goes here, but surely there is some of it, and this case makes that clear. But I want to say that this is not only about the police. From what I understand, at least two mayors have known about this situation because the situation with Sergeant McCarthy was, while there was previous mayor was in power, and both mayors seem to have either ignored the situation or covered it up, or somehow let it go on, and that the only reason we’re really dealing with it on some level now is because there was a lawsuit. I think cities run on trust, and I think trust maybe is at a low ebb right now in terms of the transparency and honesty of those who are in power. And I think until we can trust leadership, we have a problem. And as many people have suggested tonight, one of the ways to build trust is to make sure that we’re part of the decision-making, that we’re part of the conversation, not after something awful has happened, but now. I think cutting the police budget is a step, but again, we have to really think about who we are and what we want and revise how we’re doing things so that we can trust those in power to fairly represent our interests and to not cover up things we’d rather not look at, but instead to deal with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we’ll go back to our room here. Ella Condon? And then, um... We’re... I’m sorry, go ahead.
Hi, councilors. My name is Ella Condon. I live on Beach Street in Greenfield. Looks like it’s going to be another long meeting. I am asking that the council cut Greenfield Police Department’s budget by $1 million, and this doesn’t have to do with the fact that Chief Hague and Officer McCarthy were found guilty of racist hiring practices, nor does it have to do with the fact that our city spends more per capita on police than North Hampton, Amherst, and East Hampton did in 2022, or the fact that in 2019, 11 of the 25 highest-paid government officials were police. It has to do with the fact that multiple years in a row, the GPD has shown to disproportionately issue citations and arrest black people at a higher rate. And each year, when it’s pointed out by the officer who did the annual review, it is said, and I quote, “I have not been able to identify any other problems within our policies, procedures, or any individual officer practices, which give me reason to believe that there’s a problem that needs to be addressed or corrected.” And those officers are right, in that there isn’t a problem with their policies, procedures, or practices, because the institution of policing is inherently racist and classist. The institution cannot correct itself or find a problem with itself when it’s working as intended, which is why this issue goes unaddressed by our officers, by our chief of police, by our mayor. Remember back in 2020, when we had the huge George Floyd protest? Remember when multiple black and brown people of Franklin and Hampshire County spoke about how they avoid coming to Greenfield, specifically because of policing? Or how black and brown Greenfield residents want to continue living here, but part of the reason why they feel pushed out is because of racist policing? These things are not happening just because of a few bad apples you need replacing. It is because police are taught not to enforce the law, but that they are the law, that they have power and that they can get away with using that power however they so please, whether that’s overlooking a fellow officer for a raise because of his race, or showing up drunk to court duty, or harassing a teenage girl so bad she’s too afraid to go home and has to go to a friend’s house, or getting a community member fired from her job when she files a complaint against the GPD. So I’m asking you to cut this budget by $1 million as a way to hold our police accountable and to draw back their power, and to start thinking of other ways we can make this community feel safe, secure, and a place of growth for our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mariel? Mariel? And then Casey?
Hi, councilors. My name is Meera Bajani, and I live at 92 Peabody Lane in Greenfield. I support the comments that have been made thus far regarding the police department and the budget, and instead of repeating a lot of those facts, I just want to share a short story. I grew up in a town a lot like Greenfield in the suburbs of New York City. When I was in high school, I was coming home late one night with my older sister on the train, and as we were walking through the train station parking lot towards our car in our town, we came across a man in a full business suit, seemingly asleep or unconscious, under a streetlight with his briefcase next to him. And we were really concerned for his welfare. It was an odd situation we had never seen before in this parking lot. We didn’t want his things to get stolen or for some harm to come to him, and we didn’t know what to do. As two young women, we didn’t want to approach him ourselves, and the only recourse we had in our town was to call the police. We waited around for the police to arrive from a distance, and two squad cars showed up to talk to this man who was understandably thrown when they roused him. My point here is that there was no appropriate community response to call for us in that situation. Let’s not perpetuate the same problem here in Greenfield. Why do we spend more money per capita on police than similar nearby towns when police are ill-equipped and not trained for many of the situations they’re called for? Rather than funneling tons of money into a department that clearly has profound issues like the ones that have been brought to light tonight and recently, I ask you to cut a million dollars from this budget. Let’s put that money into other community resources, into housing and other programs, and engage the community in developing systems that really do keep us safe and give us options when the police are not the appropriate people to call. Thank you.
Thank you. Casey?
Hi, my name is Casey. I live on Smead Hill Road, and I’m here to talk about the marijuana farm. I have a slightly different view than everybody has here. I’m still against it, but I want to bring up some points that I don’t think were brought up before. I lived in Hawaii, where pot is technically illegal, but any hike you go in, you’ll end up in a farm. It’s really not policed as much. And I also lived in Colorado at the turn of when marijuana became legal and all these new farms were coming up. My family also owns a biodiesel fuel company that supplies energy to marijuana farms in New York, so I’ve got quite a history of knowing what happens when these types of places come into communities. One thing is crime happens to go up slightly when things like this come into the community. People come from communities nearby who think that they can easily grab something from a pot farm. I’ve also had a friend who, or multiple friends, who worked as security guards for marijuana farms in Colorado, and their experiences weren’t wonderful, let me put it that way. One of them was harmed by someone trying to steal marijuana, and the other one, well, we won’t talk about them, not great things. So not only is there an issue with smell, there’s not only an issue with water, which I don’t need to go over again, so many people here have already said those things, but there’s also an issue with safety, especially with outdoor facilities. Even if these people produce proof that they’ll enclose the facility, you can still smell that. I know that because, again, I’ve lived near those farms in both Colorado and Hawaii, and, you know, I just don’t think that this is a great thing to bring to this area, to this small town, when you really can’t get enough space between people’s homes and the community and the pot farms.
Thank you. All right. Is there any other Greenfield residents that have not spoken?
Good evening. Annie Hassett. 21 Leonard Street in Greenfield, citizen of Greenfield for quite some time. My sincerest hope is that people on the council and can really look into their heart and their soul for the ethics and the truth and the effect that this will take this pot farm. Seven generations were going to affect them. I look at it in a native kind of way. The racial subject, just in general, retribution has to be given back. I've been listening to Maya Angelou lately. 1619, how ignorant of a white person I am that blacks were brought here for slavery. Before, before the, what was it? That the boat there that came over? I'm sorry, I can't think of it. I haven't been feeling well lately, but we need food. Our country's burning. California's burning. Texas is burning. Arizona is burning. We need our water. We need our food. Food prices are going through the roof. Baby formula is just one thing. Food to feed our families. I go to the food, the people's farm there. I have a farm. There's so many people in this community trying to pick up the slack. Churches, other people that have some money, they, the Mayflower, that's what I was thinking about, they've been kicking in. But we have to really wake up and really consider what this is going to do to our community. And do we have the resources to give to that and the finances that are, who's going to get the money for that? I mean, is this, we can't eat gold, we can't eat pot, but we can eat food. I know, there is the bell. So much to say, so, so much to learn. And I'm going to be a white person that's going to keep listening to other people and try to make a difference as well as I know each and every one of you is trying to do. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Tigre.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak with you all. My name is Tigre, and I live on Baker Road in Chutes Berry, and I'm also a member of Rachel Justice Rising, and I have unearned white privilege. I'm here to ask the Greenfield councilors and the mayor to support the court decision where Officer Buchanan would be compensated for the harm caused him by racial discrimination in the police department. Racism is rampant in our society. It is one of the root causes of the genocide of indigenous people at the foundation of our nation and the enslavement of people trafficked here from Africa. James Baldwin, a black intellectual, says whites are caught in a history they don't understand. And I find it very compassionate and truthful. In school growing up, I didn't learn a truthful history about our nation regarding racial issues. For example, I was never taught that slavery existed in the North, too. When I grew up, I was taught to be racially biased, not by my parents directly, but by the messages I got in TV shows depicting African Americans as inferior and dangerous. Once I learned a truthful history about race, then I started to see how racism is in every institution. Because of racism, my black neighbors across the country are dying from mass shooters, shooters and police officers who are fearful of them even when they're unarmed. I'm using my white privilege to speak up and say no to racism in our public safety department. White supremacy culture does exist, but it's based on lies. Blacks and other people of color have been harmed by our white supremacist belief system and the consequent systemic racism for the past 400 years. It's time to stop this and repair a broken system in the Greenfield Police Department. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And finally, Julia Peters, are you online?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, and if you just state your name and address for the record.
Okay, thank you. My name is Julia Peters. I live in Western Mass in the town of Williamsburg at 91 Mountain Street. This is also where I work with Local Power, the creator of something called Community Choice Aggregation, which is a way for towns to steward their energies to dramatically reduce greenhouse gases that cause climate change. In developing policy as part of our energy work, we also focus on the carbon produced by waste, landfilling, and burning solid waste. In looking at it from a carbon perspective, we've become increasingly concerned about the extreme health risk it poses in our communities. And as the garbage we produce in our towns is transported away to other parts of the state or even out of state to the lowest-income communities that typically receive those dumps and incinerators. Currently, this already existing problem has become much, much more urgent with the recent closing of local incinerators and the resulting need by Greenfield and other towns for short-term contracts that may significantly increase our dumping fees and significantly increase landfilling in those communities. Incineration to energy may sound good, but the reality is highly polluting. As a technology, it's beset with violations, as we've seen in the Pittsfield incinerator and increasingly other incinerators in our region. They're frequently unable even to meet the most basic safety regulations. A highly toxic brew of dioxins, mercury, lead, cadmium, forever chemicals, PFAs, are reaching all of us, both from incineration as well as from the leaching and dumping landfills. We've therefore done extensive research into the alternative. This is from municipal waste and sewage, a necessary challenge we must face in parallel to the obvious preventive zero-waste solutions of recycling, reuse, and reduction. What we found is a process that converts the waste, not incinerates and not buries, into locally usable energy through the process of pyrolysis or the conversion of solid and sewage waste streams into sustainable hydrogen. This can result in extensive mitigation of the toxic processes that are present in burning, spreading, and landfilling waste, leaving a much smaller concentrated char and exponentially lower pollutants and their impact on air, land, and water. The process is economical, not requiring large capital investment, and can be a self-financing entity because of the production of energy. It's a completely transparent process with respect to reporting. It could be located at the site of a landfill where the energy generated can be used locally. I'll just sum up by saying what we're looking for from towns in Western Mass is a letter of interest in order to see whether we can meet the threshold level of aggregated waste amongst towns here to pursue the sustainable, the sustainable solution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this time, I will close public comment. I'd like to thank all of you that took time out of your day to speak with us and the courtesy that you showed everyone that spoke this evening in this board. So thank you very much for tonight. That's going to move us on to our agenda. First thing on your agenda is public hearings and second readings. Page 29. Chris, Councilor Ricketts, are you going to open the public hearing or?
No, but can we shut the air conditioner off? I'm freezing.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Oh, good. Thank you.
Councilor Forghee, would you like to read the, and open the public hearing?
Thank you. In accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May 18, 2022, at 6:30 at John's On Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street, to receive public input on the following. Increase the fiscal year 22 ambulance revolving spending limit. Appropriate $50,000 from free cash to compensated absence fund, 8450. Fiscal year 2023 operating budget. Appropriate, excuse me, $58,329,672 for the fiscal year 2023 general fund budget. Appropriate $100,000 from Fund 8406, OPEB stabilization to reduce fiscal year 2023 general fund operating budget raise an amount from $58,029,672 to $57,929,672. Establish spending limit on revolving funds not to exceed $680,557. Appropriate $1,666,258 fiscal year 2023 Water Enterprise Fund. Appropriate $2,565,093 fiscal year 2023 Sewer Enterprise Fund. Appropriate $2,42,234 fiscal year 2023 GSET Enterprise Fund. The City Council may consider the same on Wednesday, May 18, 2022, at 6:30 at John's On Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street. Materials can be obtained from the City Clerk's Office, 14 Court Square, from 8:30 till 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, or phone 413-772-1555, extension 6163. Sheila Gilmore, City Council President.
I'd like to open the public hearing at 8:13 p.m. Councilor Forghee, can you read the second reading?
Thank you. Second reading, City Council, May 18, 2022. Increase the fiscal year ambulance revolving spending limit. Appropriate $50,000 from free cash to compensated absences fund, 8450. Fiscal year 2023 operating budget. Appropriate $58,329, excuse me, $58,329,672 for fiscal year 2023 general fund budget. Appropriate $100,000 from Fund 8406, OPEB stabilization to reduce fiscal year 2023 general fund operating budget raise an amount from $58,029, excuse me, $58,029,672 to Establish spending limit on revolving funds not to exceed $680,557. Appropriate $1,666,258 from fiscal year 2023 Water Enterprise Fund. Appropriate $2,565,093 fiscal year 2023 Sewer Enterprise Fund. Appropriate $2,42,204 fiscal year 2023 GSET Enterprise Fund.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on any of these subjects? Seeing none. I'd like to close the public hearing at 8:15 p.m. That takes care of that. Thank you, Councilor Forghee. Motion to Orders and Resolutions. The first point in business is the reconsideration of vote. And that is, who read that originally?
I would just ask if we could have a couple of minutes to stretch and maybe?
Second.
Okay. I will take a recess for?
Five minutes.
Five minutes? Fine, we can do that. Liz, are you on virtually? I'm just checking to see if Liz is here. Okay. She might be on recess also. And Penny said to continue in her absence. So we'll pause for a moment. I'm just going to go over, I'm going to get back to the session going. I have a couple of things to just go over. What's that? Yes, I'd like to call this meeting back to an order, to order. All right. Just a couple of things. As I said earlier tonight, when councilors speak, we want everyone to have an opportunity to speak on everything we talk about, and we'll recognize everyone once. You can speak up to five minutes. And then, once everyone has spoken, we can go back to you for a follow-up if that's desired, unless you are the presenting department and you need to talk more. Anyone that is looking to make any budget reductions, they have to make that reduction to either the salary and wages line or the expenditures line. You cannot make it just to the bottom line of the budget. So if you're making a deduction, just be prepared for that piece if that comes forward. And remember, we can't increase. Councilor Ricketts?
My other point before we get started is we also, we could reduce it, like you said, the salaries or expenses, but we can't put it to another department at all or any?
Only in the school department.
The school only.
Correct.
Okay, just?
No, that's fine. It's the stuff that helps at this point in time.
May I ask a clarifying question on that point?
Yes.
So Kathy, when you say we could reallocate, you mean we could add money to the schools when that comes up? We wouldn't be reallocating the same money, correct?
Of course. Turn your mic on.
All right, it's important to have the microphones on. So Liz is virtual, so Liz, back me up or correct me if I'm incorrect. The charter allows the council to reduce any budget line. You have to make a reduction to specifically the expenditures or the salary. The charter also allows the council, if you reduce amounts in the operating budget, to take that amount and add it to the school's budget, to the GPS school.
There is actually a little more to it than that. The school has to request that you do that.
And there have been no requests, correct?
Not as far as I know. You could check with the mayor.
Okay. There hasn't been no requests. Okay, so that would answer that then.
So we cannot add money to the?
Correct.
Correct.
That's good to know.
All right. I am going to, we're going to start in Section 10. Motion to Orders and Resolutions. Councilor Bottomley, reconsideration.
Yes, this is Order Number FY22-140. The City Council moved that it be ordered. Motion for reconsideration. The City Council reconsideres the following motion defeated by the City Council on April 20, 2022. Order Number FY22-103. Motion on a motion by Council- Order Number FY22-103, motion on a motion by Counselor Torunzo, second by Counselor Forgie. It was by majority, seven yes, three no, one abstention. Nine positive votes required to pass, defeated. That it be ordered the city council, upon recommendation of the mayor, Wiedegartner, the sum of $60,000 be appropriated for the mill and overlay paving Phase 1 of Legion Avenue parking lot. And to meet said appropriation, transfer $60,000 from Fund 8402 capital stabilization. Two-thirds vote required.
Okay, the motion is made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ricketts.
Motion's been made and seconded. Counselor Bottomley, can you give us an explanation as to why we, you asked for that reconsideration initially?
Yeah, sure. This, there was a piece of information, a document that came to light at the last minute, that there was very little time and it seemed like it was relevant for all the councilors to have this information, which was, I guess, a letter that we got in the email form from Mayor Martin to Robert Cohen, that stated his intention to seek funding for work on the Legion Avenue parking area.
Okay. So does everyone understand that piece of it? You all received a copy of that? That was the smoking gun of sorts, where we were looking for the information as to, was it in writing anywhere about the parking lot? So, any other discussion on this? This is not a discussion on the motion. It's a discussion if we want to consider reconsidering. Counselor Johnson.
I was a, I was a yes vote on this originally, for other reasons. But it kind of comes down to this, that I, you know, if a handshake deal was made and we couldn't prove it, I could understand the apprehension. Now that we've kind of got some written backup of an agreement, I think that backs even more strongly why we should follow through with that. So, yeah, that's what I gotta say about that.
Okay. Counselor Ricketts.
I just want to say that I might have hot flashes, so if anybody wants air conditioner back on, it's okay.
No, it was cool in here.
Dress and undress, okay? Do your thing.
Is that it? All right.
I'm thinking about you all, but...
Counselor Elmer.
I just want to commend Counselor Bottomley for being willing to reconsider when the information came in. That's the kind of thing we should do. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, Counselor Bottomley.
Don't thank me too quickly. I'm not sure that I'm for reconsidering this because I don't know that I necessarily consider this a binding document. It states that the mayor intends something. I think mayors want a lot of things. They ask for a lot of things. But to secure funding would come through the council, which would be appropriated by us. That's our job, to appropriate funding. So I'm not sure that he could make that promise. He could make a promise that he intended to do this, but the appropriation has to come through the council. So this doesn't really change, it turned out to not be a big game changer for me. So I would not be up for reconsidering this.
Okay. Counselor Forgie. We are discussing if we want to reconsider this.
So my opinion is that we went to all the time and effort that went into getting this reconsideration filed on a timely basis and put on an agenda. So I think we should move forward with it. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Point of order, if we vote yes on reconsideration, does that mean the item passes?
No.
Okay, so if we vote yes on reconsideration...
Then we vote on the motion.
Tonight.
Right after.
So it would just simply be two votes?
Yes.
All right. I'm opposed to reconsideration. I think we had a lengthy debate.
I think that we should reconsider this. I was a no vote in the beginning and I will remain a no vote because I do believe that this was not above-board agreement. And I feel like that what the citizens are asking for currently is more transparency within the city. And I just don't agree with paving a developer's lot at this point in time with city money.
Thank you, Counselor Bullock. All right, let's take a vote on this, all in favor of reconsider...
We have to roll call vote.
Clerk Scott.
Why can't we raise our hands?
Counselor Jarvis? Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
No.
Counselor Bullock? President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Lapinski?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Torunzo?
Yes.
Vice President Gwynn, do you wish to vote?
Yes, yes.
The motion to reconsideration, the motion to reconsider...
All right. So now, we're gonna put the motion back on the floor. Do we need to read the motion again? Counselor Bottomley, would you like to read the original motion once again? And it'll take a two-thirds majority to pass.
Page 30.
Page 30.
Page 30. I thank you, Counselor Bottomley, for taking care of this. It's not the normal...
Order FY22-140. The city council moved that it be ordered, motion for reconsideration. That the city council reconsider's the following motion defeated by the city council on April 20th, 2022. Order Number FY22-103, motion on a motion by Counselor Torunzo, second by Counselor Forgie. It was majority, seven yes, three no, one abstention, nine positive votes required to pass, defeated. That it be ordered the city council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wiedegartner, the sum of $60,000 be appropriated for the mill and overlay paving Phase 1 of Legion Avenue parking lot. And to meet said appropriation, transfer $60,000 from Fund 8402 capital stabilization. Two-thirds vote required.
Second, Jarvis.
Okay, we are, the motion's been made and seconded for FY22-103, starting with that it be ordered. Okay, discussion. Counselor Disorder?
I'm gonna vote no. I was a yes before, but I didn't find the evidence convincing.
Okay. Counselor Torunzo?
I was just wondering if it would be prudent, I see Marlo's back there, if I could ask him a question in regards to the portions of this projection, what parts of those were completed? Because I know that the asphalt parts were removed, or the barriers were removed, correct? Was any asphalt...
Would the director, would the director like to speak on this? Sure. Come on up, please.
Make sure to turn the mic on.
It's not his first rodeo.
Okay, can you hear me? Yes. So I was just asking, this, though I understand this wasn't like a binding legal document, and it was, the projected timeline was dependent upon funding and whether it could be performed in-house. So the first part of this states, at the latest, work will begin in October of 2019. Phase 1 will consist of the demolition of concrete barriers. Did that happen?
Yes, correct. We did that in-house. We removed the barriers and we blacktopped the areas where we removed them.
Okay.
With the DPW.
Okay, because, all right, so it says, "The leveling and an application of a course of asphalt, restriping with modified layout and re-insulation of payment kiosks." Were all of those four things...
Not all of them.
Not all of them were done?
No.
Which parts weren't?
We did some of the striping, and I don't believe there was kiosks put back. There wasn't to begin with.
Okay. So, and I mean, I don't know if you know where this kind of understanding came from back then, but would you say that the term, the leveling and application, of course, of asphalt, do you think that that part was intended just for the area where the concrete barriers were? Or was that, if you can remember, a few recollections are due.
So there was a map with the original information that came to the council. It looked like a triangle, one through five.
Is that the same one we were looking at?
That's the exact one we're talking about, that area.
And that area was originally intended to be covered three years ago? Is that the same area?
Yes. You mean my previous capital request?
Yeah, but in the 2019 timeframe, when the barriers were taken out?
Yeah, well, originally, there was a capital request, I think, three years ago, to do the whole Legion lot, including the city portion, and upgrade the stormwater system. But that didn't make it to council.
Okay. So only this other part was not part of it? Was it a reduced capital request? And so only this part of it got done?
This was a new capital request this year, for just that portion, as we speak about the lease, the current lease running out this coming November, I believe.
Right, but the barriers were removed not recently, right?
October of 19.
Right, that's, yeah, that's what I thought. So that's part of it...
That was Phase 1, what we called Phase 1 of that project.
But not all of that Phase 1 came to fruition? It was just pieces of it?
Most of it.
Okay.
Most of it did.
All right.
I don't think there was intent for kiosks to go in that portion because it's a private lot. We have kiosks in the city portion, just west of that triangle area.
Okay.
In that lot.
Okay. But not all of this, I guess what I'm trying to say was, the 2019 part, was that supposed to have taken care of the area of asphalt that we're voting on now? And it just didn't get fully done, or was it...
Correct, it didn't get done because I believe that was about the same timeframe when ownership was changing. I think the information you have was with Mr. Cohn.
Yeah.
And then, then the transfer changed hands to a new owner. And that's when the other lease was done, so that the city would have site control of the area. And the intent was to finish that work before this lease runs out.
Okay.
That was the intent.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Can I follow up on that?
Sure.
Was the initial Phase 1 approved by the council at the time?
So the initial project, it wasn't phases to it. It was one big project. It was the whole Legion lot, including the private piece we're discussing tonight.
And that was, that was approved by the council for that initial expenditure?
It went to capital improvement, and then I believe the mayor had to make some cuts that year on the capital, and it never came to council for vote.
Okay. So the council, or any portion of the council, never considered this or passed anything for that project?
No. It didn't come to council for capital that year.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Counselor Elmer.
Did Phase 2 happen? Did the land swap get done?
No, no, that portion was not completed. I think it changed gears, if I'm remembering correctly, that we were gonna pave the section that we'd been using from, geez, I can't remember what year, the 50s, 60s, or whatever it was. And then we were gonna turn it back over and we weren't gonna renew a lease on this portion. So we were gonna agree to the terms that I think on the new information that came up. And then when this lease runs out, October, November, I forget which month, the intent is for the city to turn it back over and not sign another lease, I believe is the intent.
Could I follow, one quick question? So if the council never approved the capital or the capital project never got approved by a council, how, where, where did the money for the demolition of the concrete and part of the asphalt paving come from? Was that just...
That was DPW operating budget.
Oh, it was just operating, okay.
We did it with our equipment, our staff, which was a pretty big savings at the time. We did that portion to save money on the overall triangular, one through five revamp, to turn it back over. So it was a matter of a savings of money. And we fit it, we fit the project in late fall as we were getting ready for winter.
Right.
Jarvis.
Thank you. A couple of points here. If we used DPW money to do the rehab of the parking lot to begin with, we did use money that this council voted on because we voted on the DPW's budget theoretically. Number two, the other way that I look at this, is we have a lease agreement. If you had a lease agreement with a house or an apartment or property that you were leasing out, it is your responsibility to return it in the condition in which you, which you got it in. This property was probably not in the condition, the parking area, like it is when we got it, as it is now, because it's years later. It's had abuse, it's had traffic. We've gained financially off of it. So I think that we should restore it in good faith, seeing that we have a lease on the property, as you would any other property that you're leasing. Just my feelings on it. And we did spend taxpayers' money on it to begin with, theoretically.
Counselor Bullock?
Forgive me if this was in last month's meeting, but the Elm Terrace sidewalk, was that a part of the capital budget? Or is it a part of this operating budget? I'm just learning about it when I got the emails today from the executive director.
So that, that has not...
I'm gonna connect it. I'm gonna connect it, I promise.
That, that hasn't shown up on our current sidewalk list because we have many others, whether they're blacktop overlay or concrete replacement, that have a much, much higher priority, like a four or five being the worst from one. That particular sidewalk is showing as a three, but that evaluation of all our sidewalks is nearing five years now. So I went and looked at it personally. Yes, it needs some work. When we get that work done, I can't say at this point with all the other projects going on. I will address it, I just don't know when we can get to it. It's probably gonna be blacktop once again, or we at least fix the areas that are bad to make it more accessible.
And what about the Hope Street Walkway Bridge that's blocked off currently?
That has a, on the end, there was a piece of fencing that got hit. That whole fence line along there is pretty unstable, and we're looking to replace that fence. We, you know, for the simple fact that, you know, we know children and everybody liked to push on fences and whatnot. We've, I've repaired that. In my 20 years here, I can't begin to tell you how many times. And the steel rods that are mounted into the top of the granite blocking are just, they're deteriorating at the base. So we are trying to work out something, probably in next year's capital, that we, we secure that fence line. So in the time being, they go down the new walk and up the other, the new walk down below to be safe.
So my connecting this back is that I'm having a really hard time appropriating money to a private developer to repave his parking lot, when we have 100 elderly and disabled people who are walking on a sidewalk that needs repair? And we also have at least 20 kids who are crossing the street back and forth and climbing over those barriers to walk that strip on Hope Street? Because I live on Hope Street and I see it every afternoon, and my kid does it, when there's other areas that need improvement. And so it's a really hard sell for me to say that this deal that was, feels like an under-the-table deal for a private person is our responsibility as a new counselor. I can't vote for it, I'm sorry.
Counselor Forgie.
Thank you. I abstained on this motion originally, and I was heartened when I heard that there was, the next day, some documentation that could help us. And that, I believe, is part of why Counselor Bottomley brought forward the motion to reconsider because of the new information. The new information unfortunately did not include Mr. Grater's name. It still had both Mayor Martin and Mr. Cohn's name on it. I understand that the point that Counselor Jarvis made, which is that it is a lease, and the agreement transfers with a lease, that's a legal consideration. However, I still have concerns, and always have, and going back quite a number of years, that we are spending taxpayer money on property that does not belong to the city. The request is for this money to come out of capital stabilization, I believe. Is that correct? Let me just see. Let me just see. Capital stabilization. So I think you'd have to think in terms, two ways about this motion. You'd have to think about whether you agree with the premise, and you also have to think about whether you agree for the funding source. I am not going to be voting in favor of this motion, and my suggestion would be that the mayor look elsewhere for the money, perhaps in a small-city block grant.
Would you wish to address this?
Thank you. I just wanted to address because of the mentioning of legal implications in the situation, and a few counselors brought that up. Marlo has the background on the actual work. One, point one is that we actually spend a lot of time making sure that these kinds of things aren't handshake deals. This is not the goal of this administration, and this is one of the cleanup jobs that I've been working on, and like I was open and transparent and honest with you last time when I said, "I don't have it," and then it turned out we did have it, and it was in the mayor's office. So that was great. This letter, while it doesn't say, you know, it does say, "Subject to appropriation," all those words, because we have performed some of the work in the written agreement, we are probably liable for finishing it as an actual legal agreement. So not doing so, however we figure out how to pay for it, could potentially put us in another legal situation. The other thing that we inherited was a spreadsheet of lawsuits, which I am happy to say has not grown and has shrunk under this administration. So I just want to say that. This is not a small thing, I know, to talk about spending taxpayer money on private areas. We actually do it all the time. I came before this council and talked about a lease for our Veterans Service Agency. We spend a lot of our own money in that rented space. Part of the agreement is they pay part, we pay part. GSET, the Community Economic Development Offices, those offices are also rented, and Sanderson Street doesn't actually belong to the city of Greenfield, it belongs to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So this isn't an unusual situation to be investing money, and the main thing with this, and I personally will promise this to you, that we're not going to do these things without having things in writing reviewed by lawyers, and making sure they're good to go, and that we can afford them going forward. But this is one of those things where we've used this parking lot for 45 years, almost as long as I've been alive, and we want to return it to the owner in the condition we found it.
Thank you. Counsel Gilmore.
I was mostly, I was mostly testing out my raised hand function, because I wasn't sure how that was going to look on your side. But also, I want to thank Counselor Bottomley for bringing this up for reconsideration, because even though he's not in favor of actually changing his vote, I think it is really important for us to reconsider things when new facts come to light, and like many of my fellow counselors, I feel like a memo from the mayor to a private person. I mean, this doesn't feel like a contract to me. It feels like, you know, a handshake, and I know that, you know, the current mayor didn't do this, and I hope that she won't, but Mayor Martin had no right to make this decision without consulting with the council, so I'm going to be a no vote.
Thank you. Counsel Lapienski.
With the chair's permission, I'd like to ask a question of Danny Laterno.
Sure, she's got the answer.
Sure. Well, it occurs to me that, because I know the mayor's not here, so that's why I'm addressing this to you. It occurs to me that if the mayor were to decline to ask for a retrial on Buchanan, there'd be plenty of money in the legal budget to deal with whatever implications there were on this parking lot. Yeah?
I would just, that's not really relevant to what we're talking about.
But it's true. It's different legal budgets. First of all, we have multiple legal lines, and second of all, you don't have any evidence that she is doing anything that you're supposed to be disclosing outside of executive session, so thank you for that, Counsel Lapienski.
Counsel Healy.
So the lease agreement that you had with the previous owner, I assume, where you made this good-faith effort to restore the parking lot, since then, it's transferred to ownership. Typically, when that happens, the liability is gone on the city's part.
We have a lease agreement with the current owner that says we have site control, and part of that is returning the property to the condition that it was in when we--
And it says that in the lease agreement? You could provide the lease agreement--
You have the lease agreement, I believe, yeah.
And it says you're going to restore it?
I'd have to look at it and see exactly what the words say, but--
I would definitely like to confirm that it says it in there, because I'm a no if it's not in legal writing, because I can't justify spending city money on private property.
Counsel, Counsel Healy will come back to you if we get any more information on this. Counsel Disorder.
First, I'm sorry if I interrupted your train of thought at all. I apologize. So I just remembered the lease, because I read it a couple, I read it several times, and it was, it didn't say that. It said sand, salt, and one other thing, but not that.
General maintenance, right?
I don't point, I talk like that. But the other thing is, you know what might need to be done? I get about legal things, et cetera, but we have grant money, and I'm not, I'm not in favor of taxing the taxpayers for land that we don't owe, own, and, you know, we had people here, again, I'm going to go piggyback on what Counsel Bullock said. I said, "There's 100 elderly and disabled people that, more than blacktop, that could be added." 60, wait a minute, 66,000 or 64,000 was taken out of the sidewalk budget, so I think maybe taking it from grant money would be my suggestion.
Yeah, I'm not really interested in fighting for $60,000. I'm just trying to do right by my job. And also, I think Director Warner already pointed out about the rating system of the sidewalks. I think the main thing with the DPW, and these guys work super hard, and we are all really used to getting a shiny, beautiful city from time to time, and we haven't been seeing that lately, and you know why? Because they're understaffed, and they're not understaffed because they're underfunded per se. They're having, I don't know if you guys have been reading the news, but we have a labor shortage. We have eight, 10 open positions, nine open positions. So when we have leadership who treat every single fight and every single ask as acrimonious, why would anybody want to come work for this city?
Let's bring this, Counsel Bottomley, you haven't spoken on this.
I have to respond to that, because it was defunded by your administration. $150,000 of salary was cut in, like, what, November of 20, I can't remember if it was 2020? So you cut it. Your administration cut from that budget that directly impacts this city, so please don't lie to this council.
Counsel Mayo needs to speak, but were you wishing to respond to that, or I'll just move on?
No.
Okay. Counsel Mayo?
Thank you, Chair. This question is for Ms. Laterno. Danny?
Yeah, she's here. We're good.
So Danny, the question is, was this document, was this newfound document run by the attorneys in your administration currently?
I do not believe it was, because when we found it, there was a timetable for the motion to reconsider, so no.
Okay. Thank you. I believe I voted no against this, and pending any, what I don't see in terms of proof, I will still be a no. Thank you.
Counsel Jarvis.
I'm going to call the question.
Second.
All those in favor of calling the question? Yeah, that's interesting. The motion passes, so we'll call the question. Technical question, I'm sorry, I'm just going to pause for a moment. I can't see the hands of my virtual counselors, so I don't know how we can do that when we're taking a vote.
Point of order, Vice President Gwynn, you could roll-call those two members.
That might work. I'm just, you know, because I can't, there's no virtual, you know, like, when we are on the regular Zoom, I see them, I mean, but we don't see them.
Can you change, change the view?
Can you switch on grid view?
No.
No.
Can we just raise our hands, and then you ask those two?
Yeah, that's what Counsel Lapienski said, I think that can happen. Okay.
That was what I just suggested.
So you just want to ask the two of them, so we get the voting record?
Counsel Gilmore, on the motion to call the question, do you vote yes?
Yes.
Counsel Mayo, do you vote yes?
Yes.
Thank you. It's unanimous.
I think all those, so now we're back to the original motion, 22-103. A yes vote will approve the $60,000 funding to pave Legion Avenue.
Request a roll-call vote.
Counsel Jarvis?
First time ever, abstained.
Counsel Disorder? Counsel Bottomley?
No.
Counsel Bullock?
No.
Counsel Gilmore?
No.
Counsel Lapienski?
No.
Counsel Mayo?
No.
Counsel Healy?
No.
Counsel Elmer?
No.
Counsel Forgé?
No.
Counsel Ricketts?
No.
Counsel Torondo?
Yes.
Counsel Disorder?
Your mic's off.
No.
Vice President Gwynn, would you like to vote?
No.
You don't want to vote, or you--
No, I don't want to vote.
Okay, thank you. The motion is defeated.
All right.
That moves us to our next order of business, which is the opting out of the mosquito control board. Who reads that?
I did not go to a subcommittee.
It didn't go to a subcommittee, so would someone like to volunteer to read 37? Counsel Bullock?
The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wiedegardner, the Greenfield Board of Health, and in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 252, Section 2A, B2, move that it be ordered that the City Council opts the city of Greenfield out of the state reclamation and mosquito control board, SRMCB. Vote, majority vote required.
Second, Forgé.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does anyone have an explanation of this piece? We've done this before, but does anyone, does anyone, Counsel Disorder, are you up on this piece, or is there someone--
I'm not really up on it, but I'll do my best unless somebody else wants to--
I read, there was an attached document that talks about how we already, we opt out of this program because we're already a part of another mosquito-controlled district. So it seems like we're covered in the mosquito area.
That would be our understanding, thank you for that. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Seeing none?
Counsel Mayo, I did not hear your voice. Would you like to vote?
Yes, but could I, could I hear the motion again?
Yep.
A yes means what?
You're opting, we're opting out of the mosquito program, because it's a duplication of the one we already have.
Yes, then count me as a yes.
Thank you. Counsel Lapienski, you return to the table. Would you like to vote?
I vote yes. Thank you.
Unanimous positive recommendation. Unanimous positive vote, excuse me.
So that passes. That moves us into FY 2023 operating budget. Counsel Forgé, feel free on any of these to read them yourself, or delegate anyone that you've asked.
I'm going to delegate, Mike.
No problem.
All right. Order number FY 22-130, the City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wiedegardner, in order to appropriate $58,329,672 for the fiscal year 2023 general fund budget, ordered that the sum of $58,329,672, which in the full amount necessary for the fiscal year 2023 general fund budget, July 1, 2022 to June 30, 2023, be appropriated for the purposes stated. To meet said appropriation, $250,000 will be transferred from the parking meter receipts reserved, and $50,000 from free cash. $58,29,672 will be raised and appropriated. Majority vote required.
Point of order--
Second.
Is it intended to be which is the full amount? Is that what I'm reading?
Probably.
Okay.
The motion's been made and seconded by Ricketts.
Oh, just as a part of the rationale, just to note that one of the related financial orders follows for a transfer from OPEB stabilization, that requires a two-third vote versus the rest of them are majority.
As far as the motion you read, or future motions?
That's on the explanation for this motion, at the bottom.
But we're on this motion right now. Okay.
Okay, and I guess that means that we are going to start going--
Is your microphone on?
Yes, it is. Oh, I think that this means that we are going to start going through the operating budget with the recommendation from Ways and Means. It is, according to what Liz told us at our last Ways and Means meeting, we can take a department and vote total bottom line for the department, or we can split it and vote salary and wages, and then operating, the rest of the expenses is in operating.
Point of clarification, can we determine that by, we don't have to determine that now, we can determine it as we move on?
Yes.
Okay. I just don't want to say that we're going to do it one way and then change it, it can be done by department.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, she kind of hinted, if there was no discussion on something, we can just do a total sum rather than having to vote each individual.
So we will go in order of, we'll start in the budget book. It is City Council, that is actually our first budget consideration.
What page do you have?
I am on page 67 in the budget book. Okay, so this is the City Council budget, it's divided by salary and wages, and there's stipends, and that's a total wage line item of $67,607, and it's a total expense line item of $21,600. So the total City Council expense is $89,207. Is there any discussion on this budget?
The recommendation?
Yeah, is there? Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry. This was a, it looks to me like it was a four to one, I'm not, no, I'm sorry, it was a unanimous positive recommendation on this budget. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel Lapienski, did you?
I just have a clarifying question. Am I correct that the salary and wages full-time line refers to the Clerk Scott's salary?
No, it refers to Tammy's salary.
I see, so Clerk Scott's would be in the clerk's office salary.
That's correct. This is just City Council, and Tammy is our support person.
I understand.
Just a point of clarification, that also contains the counselor's stipends, that line.
I was referring simply to line item 5111.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have to say.
That is correct. That's Tammy's salary. Counsel Elmer?
I just want to note that there's a new expense, $10,000 for legal expenses, which I think is a good idea, that we would have access to our own lawyer, separate from the city lawyer. I guess I'm, I wonder where that came from. Did we ask for that? Did the mayor offer it?
We asked for it. We asked for it. Yep.
Anyone else that hasn't spoken? Seeing none, there's no changes?
Wait, 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 wait.
Who's saying that?
Doug.
Doug.
Counselor Mayo.
My, my hand is, my hand is, my virtual hand is up.
Yeah, it's, it's. We're trying. Go ahead, Counsel Mayo.
So I have a clarifying question, and maybe this is for Counselor Forgji. Maybe you can answer this. Does the stipends cover special meetings? Or is it just the monthly meetings?
Well, it's, it's an annual total.
Right.
Each counts, it counts, it, it covers all meetings, my understanding. It's not, you're not getting paid, you're not getting paid per meeting. You're getting paid $2,000 as a stipend, and then I believe there's an increased consideration for Vice President and President of the Council.
It's the same amount, but.
It is the same amount. Thank you.
May I follow up, please?
Yes.
Hold on one second, Counsel Mayo. It's, the stipends are based on attendance at regular meetings. That's what they're based on. Go ahead.
So that does, so that does not include special meetings?
It does not.
Okay.
It, it's based on attendance at regular meetings.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I don't know if we, you, you read it, we didn't really read a motion then, did we? I'm just checking. We read the big motion, and we're taking this by department as Liz recommended, so I think we can just vote.
Yes, I think so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Point of order, does the council have the authority to pass the budget one department at a time, or are we?
Yes, that's what.
That's what we do.
First the backward screen and now echoing. I'm not going to make it. Liz, are you on? Director Gilman?
Yes. Yes, generally, you, what, what usually happens is you just read through and anyone will say stop or whatever if you want to discuss a particular department further.
And we can vote by department as we just chose to do?
Yeah.
Correct.
You will have to revote the bottom line.
Yeah, when we're all done, because if the bottom line might change, correct?
Right.
Thank you, Director.
Yep.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes.
Okay, we move on to the mayor's budget. That's found on page 69 in the booklet. We have a total wage line item of $229,925. We have a total expense line item of $27,827, and the total budget for the mayor is $257,752. The recommendation coming out of Council is that it was a split decision, four to one. So there were four in favor, one opposed. We should open this up for discussion.
Thank you. That's the rationale from Ways and Means?
Yes.
Comments? Discussion? Counsel Elmer? Is your mic on?
Yes. Can I ask if there was a particular sticking point in your discussion?
Yes, there, there was, there was some discussion and debate about the mayor's actual salary, and I was the one who spoke against the increase in the mayor's salary. The reason I did this is based on my personal experience as being a mayor, where you sign up and you, you, you sign on through your election, and basically the salary that you negotiate or receive at the time traditionally remains the same through the term of the mayor. I also think that in view of some of the things we are struggling with at this point, the mayor's salary of $90,000 seems to me to be very reasonable, and I don't think there should be an additional wage increase.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Disorder?
We're taking this, I have something on the second part. I concur with you, Counselor Forgji, but in the 5200 purchase of service, I didn't, that's a significant increase from 21, if you look at it. That was one of my sticking points. It went from, I thought, 2,389, and it's now 17,000. The website was being redone, but we did not have clarity on whether that was going to be a continued expense to keep up the website, if that was for advertising or whatever. And so I, I think, we didn't come to a determination on that, but I suggested that that be halved, because I think if the website was finished, I actually had 8,000 off of that. That's in my book what I had next to it, but I concur with Counselor Forgji. So.
Counselor Disorder, did you have a question or just a statement? I'm not, I'm, just want to make sure I'm listening to your point.
It wasn't, it wasn't a question. We're talking about this whole budget item, and I had my, I just had it, we were talking about the second part. One is, first line is salary and wages, and the next was expenses, and I didn't, I think that we need to really look at all the things when some of the expenses go up is.
I didn't know if you were wondering if we ever got an explanation whether the web thing changed. I didn't know if, but we did not.
No, we did, we did not. We did, we don't know that that's going to be that, so that's all.
No, thank you. Counselor Gilmore?
I just wanted to make a request. If we're going to do this by wages and expenses and sort of handle those separately, for those departments, and I don't want to be disrespectful to Counselor Disorder, because she made, she made a really, really good point, but I was wondering if we could stick to the wages line and then vote for it or make amendments before we move on to the expenses line, just so that it's a little bit easier to follow, if people don't mind.
No, I think, Counselor Gilmore, I think when we have a wages and expense line, let's take that line, and then if there's no discussion on that line, we can move to the next one. But on this one, we did have discussion, so let's stay there, and then we'll go back to Counselor Disorder's expenses. Let's, let's down the wages line. If anyone has any comment on the wages line. Counselor Ricketts, did you?
Yes, I just want to make sure I understand. So it was four people in favor of the increase? No. Or the opposite? One person in favor? What was the four to, four to one? Was I confusing it with something? No, here's what, this gets a little tricky, at least to me it does, because there has to be a recommendation that comes out to council floor. Right. What is, what is discussed about in Ways and Means is what kind of a recommendation do we want to make? And I'm just going to ask the people that were on Ways and Means, if your recollection is that there was one in favor and four opposed to this budget. Is that correct? Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry.
So it was four, one in favor, four opposed to the salary line increase.
Correct. Thank you.
Thanks for that clarification.
Okay, thank you, because I was listening to the meeting, and I was like, wait, I don't remember.
Good catch, Counsel Ricketts.
My apologies.
Counsel Lapienski, as I think spoke on this issue.
I, I just want to say that I concur with Counselor Forgji about the increase in the mayor's salary, but I would also say that I think 90,000 is too high, and I'd like us to move back to the 70,000 that she was paid and did a fantastic job with.
Okay.
We can entertain that as a motion after everyone spoke. If you're asking for a deduction, that's what has to come out of that, so.
I, I understand, but I figured I'd let people speak before anybody.
No, that's what I'm saying. We'll, we'll come back to that. Thank you. Counsel Elmer, did you have?
I, I just wanted some clarification. Was there no disagreement about the second line in wages? Is the only, the only disagreement?
To the best of my knowledge, and I'm going to look again for everybody at Ways and Means, I believe that was okay.
Okay.
That, that was deemed to be okay.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this? Counsel Mayo, if you want to speak, just say I'd like to speak.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to speak.
Okay.
May I have floor?
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
No problem.
Was, thank you. So that line item covers the mayor's salary and who, and who else?
There are two, I believe they are full-time employees in the mayor's office, so that reflects two salaries. The 160, the one, excuse me, the 136,768 reflects two salaries. Am I correct?
Correct.
Yes, okay. You'll notice, if you notice on the wage and salary line items, if you go to part-time salary and wages, which was budgeted for last year at 31,320, that was not budgeted this year. So I believe that if you add the 96 and the 31 together, you're going to get something a little less than the figure that is being, a little more than the figure that's being requested.
Okay.
Little, you're going to get a little more than, than those two sums put together.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it, Counsel Mayo?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Gilmore, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I had a question for, well, first I want to say, I watched this meeting, and it was a very difficult conversation, because, you know, everybody on this subcommittee had to talk about, you know, wages and, you know, possible raises to the people who are, you know, standing to benefit. And it was, it was really awkward. I want to thank everyone for that, because I could sense the tension in the room, even though we weren't in the room. And my question, I don't remember if Ways and Means had a recommendation for how much the reduction would be, or if it was just this theoretical idea of a reduction. Was there, was there a number attached to that?
Counsel Bullock, did you want to?
No, I watched it today, and I don't believe there was a number attached to it.
Anything else, Counsel Gilmore?
No, I was just trying to remember, because that was one of the earlier meetings. So I'm thinking at this point, I, I don't know what I want that number to be, but if someone's going to make a motion to make a reduction, I was hoping that if we had the recommendation from Ways and Means, that would be a good starting point.
Counsel Forgji?
I think we go back to the fiscal '22 amended number, which is 90,059, and that's a reduction, according to my math, of $3,098.
Point of order, don't we have to amend total wages as opposed to that individual?
Yes.
That is going to be, that is, that is what is going to happen.
No, you're saying the total wage line, the combined.
Yes, we do. We do, but that is the amount of reduction.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
So is that the total amount that you're, that you're, that Ways and Means talked about reducing it? Was 3,000, what was that number, 3,000?
3,098.
3,098. Counsel Toranzo, did you have something to add before?
No, I was just.
Okay, nope, just making sure. Counsel Disorder?
Just math, just point of information. So 226827, is that what anybody else got? Yes, that's correct. It reduces to that number. 226827.
Can I just make a comment on this, that?
Yeah, Counsel Bullock, go ahead.
I feel like there is a lot of pay disparity in our city across departments, and I don't want this to feel like it is punitive towards the mayor, which is sort of how, like the Ways and Means conversation, that, you know, there's a lot of tension at the moment, and I don't think that's how we should be making pay decisions and salary decisions for people in our town, is based on whether we like them or not, or whether our feelings about them. I'll also say that I did, Ginny, as a nod to you, a deep dive in mayor's salaries in Massachusetts, and our mayor does receive on the lower end of salaries in Massachusetts. And I, and I'm not, it's not lost on me that this is, you know, double our median income and in Greenfield, and about four times our per capita income for residents here. So I'm in favor of, of keeping the mayor's salary the same going into this fiscal year, and I also feel that it is important for everyone across all the departments in Greenfield to receive cost of living increases as well as raises on a regular basis in a more equitable fashion.
Before we go on, thank you, Counsel Bullock. Do we have a motion to reduce? Because we don't have a motion, so are we just, but I didn't know if she, because she was already giving us a number, so I didn't know if Counsel Forgji made a motion. That was just discussion. Okay, I'm just, point of clarities before we do that. Is there any more discussion on that piece? Because I'm going to go to Counsel Lapienski, who I think is going to create a motion. Counsel Toranzo?
I was just, you know, recalling kind of the, a little bit of the conversation during Ways and Means on this, and I, I mean, I think we were kind of considering the idea that Chris had mentioned when she was the mayor, how she had the same salary the whole time, and then that didn't change until the next administration. And I, I honestly think that that's something, when I heard that, it was, it was kind of remarkable, and it, it got me thinking, like, well, it is an elected term, so you know what the salary is at your term, you know what I mean? You get one chance to negotiate it, and that is, in my mind, and maybe there should be something changed in the charter for this, that unless, if you get reelected, you get the next bite at the apple, you know, you get to try to renegotiate your term, or your, your, your money for that subsequent term. That's just my feelings on it, because it's, it's, i.e., I guess we're the only other paid elected officials for the city, right? Is that right? Everyone else is appointed?
School committee.
Oh, school committee, right? And a successor, and they get, yeah, and I mean, maybe that would be a blanket thing to go across the board if they're flat, if some are flats, you know, things throughout terms unless, I don't know, just maybe we should adopt that going forward as a, as a thing, and this could be a way to try to get that ball rolling as, by example.
I don't want to put that hat on, on the moment, but there were changes in the Charter Review Committee for the mayor's salary and how that's determined, but I'm just saying that was already, the code, it was already being discussed, so, and I don't know if it goes along with our talk tonight, but it has been looked at. Counsel Gilmore?
Yeah, just as a, a point of information, we are not allowed to vote on raises that would take place during our tenure on City Council. If we've If we vote to increase the stipend, it would actually take effect after we leave office. So I think that's kind of, this might be something that we would maybe want to tighten up in the charter, but to bring it around to the discussion that we're having now, I would be willing to make the motion that Counselor Forgji had talked about. It was 3,998, was that the correct number?
That would be, that would be the amount of reduction.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yeah, I would be willing to make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a, the motion's been made and seconded to reduce the line by, give me the amount again.
Point of order.
No, let's not go further, I can fix this for you. Okay, so that's the motion. Let's have discussion on this motion before we, Counselor Lapinski?
Well, I was going to make a motion, but I was asked to stand down by the chair because people were going to have more discussion, so I'm now confused about the process by which we make motions for amendments. Will someone explain that to me?
Motion for, if you wanted to amend the amount that was just made, it hasn't been seconded, it was made and seconded?
Yes.
Yes, so, thank you. You can make an amendment immediately right now.
Oh, I can make an amendment to the amendment.
No, because that's not an amendment, that's a motion. You can make an amendment to that motion.
Uh.
So she, Counselor Gilmore, made a motion to do 30, 3,000, whatever. You could amend that motion and we could vote on that amendment, and then go back to the motion.
And then go back to, okay, got it.
Actually, Vice President Gwynn, I would be willing to withdraw my motion. I heard what.
I as well.
I thought, yeah, I thought I heard what Counselor Lapinski was going to say, and I didn't think that that was going to be popular, but maybe I don't get to decide that, so I will withdraw my motion.
And Counselor Mayo, you withdrew your second.
That's correct.
Okay, Counselor Lapinski, would you like to make a motion?
Wait, can we just get clarity on what the motion that was withdrawn was? I feel like we're talking about a budget without numbers, which is really stressful to me as someone who deals with budgets.
It was the reduction.
It was.
So it was, so we have to vote on total wages, so it would have reduced the total, the total wages then?
By 3,098.
Okay, to 254,946, so that motion is.
No, just the wages line.
Just wages line.
To 226-827.
But I thought we had to vote on total, when we vote, the final vote, we have to vote on total wages?
That's correct. And then to blue line.
Okay.
The blue line was to be reduced by 3,098, according to that motion.
Okay.
So, so I want to bring a couple of points of information into this when I'm making my motion. First, the charter says, currently anyway, the mayor shall receive a minimum salary of 70,000, the city council shall by ordinance establish an annual salary for the mayor. Is there an ordinance currently in effect that says the amount of 90,059?
There is an ordinance.
Of 85.
Of 85 in the code.
56,17 compensation. So how is it legal for us to be voting on an amount that is greater than by ordinance if the charter requires an ordinance?
Well.
Oh, the ordinance says why? Okay, and then the second thing is just, Counselor Bullock, so I did some research on the median, the median household income is in the 40s, but the median individual income in Greenfield, and this is an individual's income, is actually 32,000. So with that said, I move that we reduce the amount of the blue line by 23,157, which would bring the mayor's salary down to the 70,000 that was under Mayor Forgji.
Second.
They're talking about my salary. Good talking, Roger.
So I will second this for the purpose of discussion, but I also would like to be recognized on this motion.
I seconded already.
The motion's been made and seconded by Counselor Mayo.
Can I make a comment then?
Counselor Gilmore, I'm sorry, you're getting stepped on by some feedback. Go ahead.
Sorry, may I make a comment?
Sure.
Yes, we have an ordinance that says 85,000 is the minimum, so.
Correct.
I don't.
That's not right.
Wait, wait.
Mayor, I think you're coming through the speaker, so could you mute, please?
I'm sorry, is Judy me to mute?
No, not you.
The mayor.
I believe the mayor's microphone was on.
It's hot.
Counselor Gilmore, can you continue? Because we were having trouble hearing you because it was kind of muffled in multiple directions.
So I'm not, I'm not sure how we can deal with a motion that's already been made and seconded. We have an ordinance that says that the minimum salary for the mayor is 85,000.
That's correct.
I don't think that we can make a motion that goes against one of our ordinances, so I think that they would have to withdraw.
Yeah, can we amend the motion?
Or if we vote on it, I don't know what happens to it at that point, and I don't know if our parliamentarian is on tonight.
He's not, but I think we can get this one, Counselor Gilmore. I believe we can amend this motion to be in line with the legality, which is 85,000.
But point of order, it's not a matter of legality because we are amending the total wages blue line, which is not a matter of ordinance.
I would believe that is correct also, because he, we are not talking about just the mayor's line, we're talking about the entire salaries line, so if you deduct that amount he asked for from the total line, then it, how they spend it, remember, is up to them, not us.
That's correct.
Counselor Forgji.
Previous council did vote to increase the number from the 85,000 up to the 90,000. So previous council did approve of that increase for the mayor.
Can I amend the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Can I, I would like to make an amendment to reduce the total wages by 3,098 for a total of 254,946, I believe.
No, you still got to do it by the blue line. You got to deduct it from the 229.
Isn't that what?
No, I'm deducting, I'm deducting it, yeah, I'm deducting it from the 258.
No, it's the 229.
Oh, from the mayor, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Okay, let's just rein this in a bit. Counselor Bullock, are you, do you have your?
I'm doing my numbers.
No problem.
To reduce the total wages by 3,098 to 226-827.
Correct.
Someone have a second on that?
I'll second it.
There's an amendment on the floor, it's been made and seconded to reduce that amount. Counselor Bullock, any discussion?
No, I just want to keep going.
Is there any other discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amended amount.
Request a roll call.
You understand that I can't override that, just for those of you that are part of the council, if it's requested, I have to follow through. This is the amendment to amend Counselor Lapinski's full amount to Counselor Bullock's amended amount.
Of a reduction.
Of a reduction.
Poor Kathy.
Majority vote?
Counselor Disorder.
No.
Counselor Disorder.
We didn't hear you.
Your mic's off.
Pass.
Counselor Bottomley.
Yes.
Counselor Bullock.
Yes, thank you, Kathy.
President Gilmore.
Yes.
Counselor Lapinski.
No.
Counselor Mayo.
Yes.
Counselor Healy.
Yes.
Counselor Elmer.
Yes.
Counselor Forgji.
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts.
Yes.
Counselor Toranzo.
Yes.
Counselor Disorder.
Yes.
Does the Vice President wish to vote?
Yes, yes.
The motion to amend made by Counselor Bullock to reduce the mayor's salary by 3,098 to the amount of 2.
Some of the total wages.
226, 827, passing by the George.
Kathy, I think your mic is off. I was able to pick that out, but just.
Would you like me to repeat it? I have now turned my mic on.
Nope, I was able to pick it out, I just wanted to let you know, because when we get more tired, it's going to be more difficult.
You got it.
All right, moving forward. Yes, Jasper's motion is now on the floor to the amended.
I've been voted on no longer, Counselor Lapinski.
Counselor Lapinski's motion, I just parroted her, I'm sorry. Counselor Lapinski's motion is now on the floor to the amended amount by Counselor Bullock.
Your microphone was off, Kathy, so it's okay.
So, all those in favor, do we know what we're voting on before we do this?
No.
Okay, I could see that look even without my glasses. So we're voting on the same amount that we just voted on, but now it's the full motion. We amended it to the new amount, and it, now the motion that Counselor Lapinski made is now the amount that Counselor Bullock amended it to. So we're voting for the same thing we just voted for, because now it's the amount of the made motion.
Yes.
Yes.
All those in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
We had one, two, three.
I'm opposed to. We should have a roll call, because I can't tell who's voting for what.
Okay, we can do that.
Counselor Jarvis.
No.
Counselor Disorder.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley.
Yes.
Counselor Bullock.
Yes.
President Gilmore.
Yes.
Counselor Lapinski.
Yes.
Counselor Mayo.
Yes.
Counselor Healy.
Yes.
Counselor Elmer.
Yes.
Counselor Forgji. Counselor Ricketts.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Toranzo.
Yes.
Does the Vice President wish to vote?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
The motion passes by majority.
Are there any other discussions? Now we're going back to Counselor Disorder. Counselor Disorder is on the expense line.
Okay, I'm going to make this a little simpler this time.
Yes.
I am going to make a motion that the expense line be 19,827 with a rationale that if we find out that the website is going to continue to cost whatever it is, which was not sure at the time of discussion, so that we have 5 million, maybe 600,000 capital stabilization, they can come back for, you know, another order if need be. That's my motion.
Second.
Point of order, we didn't actually vote on the wages line item, we just voted on the amendment.
No, second vote was on, that second roll call vote was on the line.
No, that was on the full amendment.
No, your motion was amended by Counselor Bullock, we voted on the amendment, then we went back and voted on your motion with her amount, and that just passed.
Right, but we didn't vote on the actual line item.
Yeah.
Not yet.
Point of order.
Yes, we did.
Yes.
We did vote on the actual line item, but anyone who voted in favor of that because it passed could file a motion to reconsider if they wanted to.
We did not vote on the line item.
I think we voted on two amendments, too.
No, we didn't. We voted, the first motion was to reduce the 229, 925, down to 226-827. That, but the first reduction amount was, was Counselor Lapinski's amount. That was the motion to reduce, because you can't reduce a single line item, you can only reduce wages or expenses.
Not correct.
It's not incorrect, that is exactly correct. You cannot vote on.
That's correct.
.5110, because you can't control that, you can only, we can only control the wages total and the expenses total.
Point of order.
And inside of that, they get to.
Let's just vote again and make everybody happy and keep going.
Motion to reconsider. We still have to go all the way down. Although I abstained.
The bottom line vote would be the total executive line. We have a whole bunch of lines before we get there.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, I'm just saying, so we haven't voted on the total executive line, because we're only on the second line of the mayor's piece, which is only the beginning of the total line. All we've done is changed one line of one piece.
I'm good.
All right, so now, the salary line has been changed by that reduction of 3,000 dollars that we did and voted on. Now we're going to go to the next line, which is the expenditures line. When we're all done with all those lines, we'll vote the executive as one line, because I believe that's Director Gilman's wish.
All right.
If I'm wrong, it's very possible. All right.
Keep it a tally, just in case.
You're going to have to.
Counselor Disorder, you were going to make a motion to reduce that line, which you did, yes?
I can make it again, because I'll be.
And just, could you just make?
My motion is, I move that the expenditure line be 19,827.
And that's reducing it by?
And I'll second that again.
Do you know the dollar amount we're reducing the line by?
8,000.
8,000. Motion's been made and seconded by Jarvis?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. Discussion. Counselor Elmer.
Yeah, could you explain where you got the 8,000?
The 8,000 was, it was, we had a discussion that evening, they were not sure on the cost of the, we're getting a new website, and they weren't sure if it was an ongoing cost. We've increased greatly, as I said, from 2,000 to 17,000, so I'm not sure what the figure was going to be, nor was anyone else, so I thought that was a reasonable, a reasonable, and there was discussion on it and some kind of general, I wasn't out left fields, that's all.
Any other discuss, Counselor Elmer, go ahead.
Could I follow up? Could we get clarification from the Chief of Staff about whether that's a one-time charge?
This is like deliberation, I mean, we should be moving past that point, where, you know, I'm not trying to be difficult, but Counselor Forgji, this was your.
The Ways and Means.
Ways and Means, you know, went through all this, is there any clarification that could help, or, I'm just trying to move this along.
Well, I think Jenny has already spoken to it, I think Mike really had a lot to say about this line item, so I'll turn it over to Mike.
Yeah, to piggyback off of what Ginny was talking about, we were trying to get an explanation about why there was such a drastic increase from '21 to '22, and it was explained to us that had to do with the creation of the new website, and I said, okay, well, that's, you know, we were talking about how, all right, well, that's fine, it's a good upfront cost, but are you creating another one this year, too? Like, is, why would it be, wouldn't this money go back down? And I don't think we got a real satisfactory explanation.
Okay.
So that's what, that's why I agree with what Ginny's requesting, and having that caveat there, I think, is pretty good, too.
I'm going to recognize Counselor Bullock in a minute, but let me just make a comment. To facilitate this as we go on, it would be very helpful if, when you're done with your discussion, if you gave us where you're leaning towards on this vote, so we know where we're navigating. Like you just said, I agree with Ginny.
Yes, I agree.
That's going to help us to know that we're getting closer, like you're in favor or not, instead of just circular discussion. So we're not here... Counselor Bullock?
I would, um, I watched the Ways and Means Committee and I don't think there was a solid answer on whether this was maintenance or ongoing, like, building and creation of the website. So I would appreciate if we could hear from Danny for thirty seconds about what that cost is. So that we don't have to bring another motion forward.
Could you just give us a brief update? I'm just trying to avoid going back to every department and not get through this, but if this was a point of, um,
It's not exactly accurate what was said. At Ways and Means, the question was, are we going to be doing a website every year? I said no. I pulled up the invoice. I explained to councilors it was in approximately fifteen to sixteen thousand dollar range and it was crossing two fiscal years, but I think it was being paid for out of this year. I said, yes, it is still in the budget as seventeen thousand because we use that line, purchase of services, for things, including marketing and other things. And I think what I said was that it is your prerogative to question that, but it is about priorities and whether you think that Greenfield should be spending money on things like that going forward instead of having to scrape things together. That's what I said.
Okay, thank you. Is that clarification?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just one more time. The eight thousand is not exactly half of seventeen thousand, so that's why I was asking where the eight thousand came from.
Because it's a round number.
Okay, that's a good enough reason for me. Okay, thanks.
Okay, the motion's been made, seconded. Any more discussion on the reduction of eight thousand dollars?
I just want to add one more thing. I think I'm not in favor of reducing this. I do think that these budgets were put together with care and understanding of what departments need. And I do trust Danny when she says that she put this number together with understanding of what costs were coming up from last year that are still owed and what's coming forward. So, yeah, and I think our website needs help to make it more accessible to the public.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, um, all those in...
Oh, no, Dan, I've got my address.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I know it's hard, I know.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to speak to, um, you know, Counselor Elmer was asking about the eight thousand and, you know, someone said it was a round number. I'm not sure who said that. Um, but as a reminder, this is coming out of the total expenses, so if they want to put that money into the purchase of service line, they're allowed to do that and they could take it from advertising or they could take it from, you know, any, they could take it from any other place. So I don't think we have to worry too much about it being a round number.
Okay, um, am I missing anyone else? I'll hear Doug come in from the sideline here any moment. Okay, um, so the motion has been made, seconded, discussed, reducing the line by eight thousand for them to spend as they wish in that expense line. All those in favor?
Aye.
Keep your hand up, please, for a little bit.
Or we could just do a roll.
Six, seven, Doug is eight.
Opposed?
One, two. Okay, that's only ten.
Abstentions?
Never abstained.
I didn't hear, did Sheila vote?
President Gilmore, would you like... I thought yes.
You were yes, thank you. You wished to vote, Vice President.
Did Doug vote?
Doug voted yes. Are you a show of hand?
Yeah.
You're a yes? So that's thirteen. The motion passes by ten.
The motion passes. So someone that's keeping our tally, that reduces that line by eight thousand dollars. Counselor Torondo, because remember when we get to the executive line, we have to give it as a round number or Liz will slap me from virtually. Okay. Next.
Next, we are moving on to executive administration.
We are moving on to executive administration.
Definitely haven't voted on the bottom line yet.
No, you have not. It is coming. The bottom line for the executive is after the economic development, marketing, salary and expenditures.
Excuse me, Counselor Forgé, continue.
Counselor Forgé, you were saying?
Thank you. Um, we're into Department 123, which is executive administration. There's a line item for total wages of eighty-one thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-six.
It's in your packet. This is the executive.
Is there any discussion on this line?
This was, I believe, please back me up, we went with a, um, a four, I'm looking, I'm reading my notes and I can't even read my own handwriting. It looked, it looks like it was four votes because we didn't have, we only had four members. So it was four positive.
Four, so unanimous in favor of that?
Yes, that's correct.
Is there any discussion on this line?
I don't know. It's in the packet.
Seeing none? Um, all those in favor?
I completely missed that.
You?
I did not get the motion, I did not get the second, I completely missed the vote.
That's all right.
Can someone tell me what we voted on?
Um, we had no discussion, so let's, let's be clear to the clerk. Let's make a motion for that line.
I move that, um, line item, one, two, three, zero, five, one, 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 salary and wages, full-time.
Just do total.
Is, uh, the total would be eighty-one thousand, four-fifty-six.
And I have a second on that?
Second, Jarvis.
All those in favor?
I don't see it, I don't see the number.
Okay, got it, all right. Just a point of clarification that, if I could, uh, to streamline this, kind of, if...
Aye.
To streamline this, I believe this is what Liz had kind of described before.
If there's no discussion, we can move on, right?
If there's executive administration, we can just vote that one line that says total executive administration, which combines the wages and expenses, so we don't have to have...
Correct. We don't have to vote on every line unless there's a change. And then we voted in as the total, correct? We've already made this motion, let's just follow through because we're already there and then we'll do better. Did we vote?
Did we vote on this one?
So the motion was made to leave that line at eighty-one, all those in favor? Yes. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Okay, seeing none, moving forward.
So do you want total expenses eighty-one, total executive administrative? Is your preference?
Now we have to go to economic development, right? Is that the next piece of this department?
No.
No. No, we only voted the salary piece.
Okay, so now you want to go to the next line and ask if there's...
Right. This would be, um, total expenses six hundred dollars, so then total executive administration would be eighty-two oh fifty-six. I make a motion that we...
No, we don't have to make a motion if there's no discussion.
Okay.
Is there any discussion on this? Any changes on that line? Okay, seeing none, move forward. Counselor Elmer, did you have a?
No.
Okay. Um, next line?
Bionicum?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, okay. Um, community and economic development, which is CED. I think that, um, bottom line, we went ahead with, um, we went ahead with bottom line. However, there was a lot of discussion around this and I think it's important that we understand that exactly what's going on because some of the salaries are paid by the city and some of them are paid by the grant. So, the bottom line for economic development is ninety-four thousand, eight forty-three. No one made, uh, an amendment or a motion to reduce any of these. It was just more explanation.
Counselor Disorder?
I brought to the attention this because CDBG annually, and I'm, don't quote me on this, but I think it's eight twenty-five thousand. And that, I'm just remembering me, so, I'm just remembering that. We pay part of the salaries out of that and it was, I think I put that in my notes back to all of you and to the mayor. It was unclear exactly how much. I, um, I think it was sixty, forty. What was unclear to me was whether or not we could take the entire thing out of, um, if we could be back at the bottom line of seventy-nine, one-nine-three because that was a very, that was a substantial increase from the year before. It's a fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars and where that grant money is there. We, grant money's not subject to appropriation, so we actually don't get an accounting of what happens with that, so, um, I'd move that the bottom line on this one be seventy-nine, one-nine-three.
Second?
Yeah, it just has to come from one place or the other of those two lines. Is that an expense reduction?
No, I thought we were going to go to bottom line to save...
No, no, you still have to take it from wages or expenses if you're reducing.
No, I'm going to take it from both then. I'll make a motion for wages and salary on the wages line that it's fifty-five, nine-four-three.
That's reducing it by?
Whatever the difference is.
Reduced by how much?
Do we know the dollar amount? Because we have to, the motion has to be the reduction, not the total.
I believe that we make the motion for the amount, but I'll let you know the figure. Am I incorrect?
I came up with fourteen thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll second that.
Is that correct then? The motion's been made to reduce that line by fourteen thousand.
Point of clarification, from now on, would you like the recommendations to be the line, the number? I think that's what we just said. You want a motion for the number, correct?
We want, we want a motion... Clerk Scott?
How would you...
Both. We want the reduced amount and then the the reduced amount of the line that I think you're making. The reduced amount is one thou, fourteen thousand, six hundred and fifty, which would bring you to fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-three.
Very good. That's what I'm going to do from now on, my apologies. Thank you for clarification.
I think, I'll, once we get how we want these to make it easier, we'll go from there. It's just a, um, all right, so that motion's been made to reduce that line. It's been seconded by Counselor Lapinski. Is there any discussion on this? Was there any, from Ways and Means, was there any other discussion on the reason for this reduction or? And your rationale for that, Counselor Disorder, was?
Eight-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand in CDBG funding, some of which pays for salary and it's an undetermined amount. Again, people can come back if they don't have enough. Eight-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. Sixty, forty.
I don't see it.
Oh. Director Gilman, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I'm fine. Um, yeah, let Counselor Disorder make her second, um, reduction, um. The only thing I can, well, this is, you're deliberating, so, go ahead.
All right, um, so you want us to make the next... Do we need to vote that or do we, we want to vote that line? Okay.
We're still discussing it.
Correct. Counselor Elmer?
Yeah, so, the request was for a hundred-and-twenty-three thousand and nine-hundred-and-nineteen. The mayor cut it by fifty thousand?
Right.
And then now you want to cut it by another fifteen thousand roughly? I just don't understand the rationale, so maybe you could explain it.
Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, folks, was there not a request for a second employee that got denied in that? That's why it didn't get jumped? Is that, am I remembering that right?
Yes, there was, there was a jump.
So that's why the jump from twenty-two to twenty-three request was like, uh, almost sixty grand? But it wasn't, essentially not honored. Didn't, and so that person's not going to have another employee.
Okay, if I could follow up?
Of course.
The, uh, and then what's the rationale, if, once again, I know you said something, but I didn't quite get it. What's the rationale for cutting another fifteen thousand out of, uh, the seventy thousand that the mayor requested?
I'm hoping that that will come from the CDBG fund because this is going to come out of, this is going to come out of taxpayer. There's eight-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand and I think that we need, I had brought this up before in Ways and Means. Sometimes, I think, sometimes the grant money is related to what we are going to put in with wages. There's something that's coming further along tonight or tomorrow night, whenever we get to that, or next week, where salaries are being paid out of a grant and we know that. So, um, so that was my rationale.
Counselor Bullock?
Um, I think that I have to vote against this, um, and leave the, leave the number whole. I know, I don't have a full understanding of where our CDBG funds go, but I do know that many of our community organizations receive those community development block grants and so I feel like forcing the city to pull from those organizations to pay for this when it could be in a city budget is not something I want to risk.
Counselor Gilmore? President Gilmore?
I wanted to make a suggestion that maybe, yeah, I wanted to see if maybe we could, um, I don't know if tabling is the right part, because I know we're in the middle of the entire budget, but what if we took this up later on when we talk about that? Because I don't think we're going to get to that tonight. And they do feel like they're related to each other.
I think that might just complicate things, um, as we try to move through this. Maybe Director Gilman could help me out with that.
I'm just going to help you out quickly and say that when you deal with federal funds, you can't do, you have something that's called time and effort and you can't just pay somebody's, they have to be spending the time on that particular project. So I would say that Counselor Bullock is on track. And how they're being spent has to be approved also by CDBG. And then one final thing, when you're going forward, if you don't have changes, I would just say salaries and expenses as presented and just vote that number for any department where you don't have changes.
And, but you want us to vote that number would be the, if we don't have changes? Okay.
Right.
Okay. Is there any more discussion on this? Counselor Disorder?
I just, this is my last comment.
No, that's okay.
Promise, but it's actually, you know, fifteen thousand dollars. It's, it's, I think, like a thirty percent increase from last year. And secondly, we did have a big discussion about this because in this wage line was expenses, which, until Counselor, until Mike said, what is that anyways? We weren't aware that that was part-time salary, so there was a lot of confusion and questioning on that. That's why I stick by my motion.
Okay. I just want to make sure, Counselor Disorder, that's, you're all set with that as far as why you're sticking to that number. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none? Roll call vote as asked by Counselor Lapinski for the reduction of fifteen thousand dollars. Go ahead, Counselor. Go ahead, Counselor. Clerk Scott, I'm sorry. Okay.
I just wanted to point out that it was for a reduction of fourteen six fifty.
Right.
Fourteen thousand six fifty, not fifteen thousand.
Okay.
That's all.
Fourteen thousand six fifty. Thank you.
Counselor Jarvis?
No.
Counselor Disorga?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomlin?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
No.
President Gilmore?
Come back to me.
Sorry, I just turned my mic on. Counselor Lapinski?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
No.
Counselor Elmer?
No.
Counselor Forgie?
No.
Counselor Ricketts?
No.
Counselor Toranzo?
No.
President Gilmore?
I'm going to vote no.
Does the Vice President wish to vote?
Yes. No.
The motion does not pass.
Okay. The next line?
Next budget is?
No, didn't we have another line change before we get there, Counselor Disorga? Was there another?
I'm going to just vote the total budget then, as it is ninety-four. I'll make a motion for Total Economic Development for ninety-four eight four three, because I read what the group wanted, so that will simplify things, to speed things along.
I'll second that.
I can read a room.
We don't need a motion for that.
No, it's as is, right?
It as is, so we don't need a motion?
Right.
What did Liz just tell us?
Yeah, to do, to just say as is and then go to the next.
As presented.
As presented.
Okay.
So we need a motion, we need a motion that it's as presented, or no motion?
As, as presented.
As presented. Okay, move on. Next.
The next is the Assessors Department, that is one forty-one. Does the council need to vote total?
Yeah, are we, hold on one second, I'm sorry, we're done with total executive now, right? We're done?
Yes.
So we have to vote the total executive line before we move on, because we made changes.
As amended?
As amended.
Okay.
Counselor Toranzo, you were keeping track of this?
Right.
And so was Counsel, and Clerk Scott.
So I got a total executive of four two three five five three.
Liz, can you confirm?
Yes, yes.
So, do we, we need to make a motion, or we just move forward?
We just move forward, because we're going to vote the bottom line, but it is good to confirm this.
Okay, so we can?
We'll vote the bottom line of the entire budget.
Okay, so we confirmed now that we're, we're correct to the executive?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Counselor, before, before we go on, I, I understand that we're going to scrutinize this budget more than we have in the past, but just keep in mind, it's ten fifteen, and we're on the first piece. I'm not suggesting you skip things that you want to talk about, I'm just suggesting that we try to think ahead of where we are and move forward with, with those items, because we're, we're still just on the, the first item. Some, Counselor Gilmore?
Yeah, I wanted to bring up, so I followed Ways and Means pretty closely, and I know that the sticking points were definitely, you know, within certain departments. I think if we can get through the next part, and then maybe adjourn and come back tomorrow, I think we would be looking good.
Let's see where we get to, it's already, let's see where we get to, let's just move forward, and then we'll pick a time and, and we'll come back. Counselor Forgie, you were saying?
I was saying that the next is the Assessors' budget, and the total wages as presented, total expenses as presented, and the total Assessors' budget is two eighteen, three nineteen. It was unanimous. Perfect, perfect, perfect recommendation.
I'm sorry, we're not where you are somehow.
She was going by the book.
She's on page seventy-three of the book.
She wanted to go on this. They've got it like this, Chris, off of this sheet.
Oh, my God.
Yeah. We're on the, on the limiting sheet. We should have been right now talking about the Reserve Fund.
And what page is that on in the book, please?
Financial, Financial Administration, that's, the Assessors', it's down the bottom, but it starts after total executive, we're on Financial Administration, the first line is Reserve Fund.
So what, what page is it in the book?
Seventy-six.
So we go to seventy-six, and then back to seventy-three, okay. That's nuts.
Just try to help out here. How's it counting? Be sure.
This, I'm sorry, this was not a positive recommendation, there was an abstention.
Are we on the Reserve Fund?
We are on the Reserve Fund.
Okay.
That's one thirty-two Reserve Fund, seventy-five thousand, bottom line total.
So it's four yes, one abstention?
I, I think there, I.
Counselor Disorga has her hand up.
Yeah, I know she's.
I believe it was two two and, two two and one.
What, okay, thank you.
Two two and one?
Okay.
On the Reserve Fund of seventy-five thousand. Do we have some discussion on this line? Counselor Disorga.
So, my recommendation would be that we zero out that line. Every, we've put this in, seventy-five thousand, and then it goes into free cash, and then we just do it again the next year, so that's where the discussion around that came. And with what we have in capital stabilization, it appeared unnecessary to me. So I'd make a motion that it, that that line be zero.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to zero out that Reserve Fund line. Is there, I'm sure there's going to be discussion. If not, we can vote on this. Is there any discussion on zeroing out that line?
Yeah, but it was two two one.
Director Gilman, are we facing any penalties or anything by getting rid of this line?
You're not facing penalties, it's just that it's probably much needed.
Okay. Counselor Bullock?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't even want to say something here, but I feel like I have to. I'm assuming that this is a Reserve Fund, like, if you need to pull from this because something goes awry, this happens in budgets, and if there was, like, a special program we wanted to be a part of as a city, and we wanted to upfront the cost for that, like, this is a bucket where we could pull from to upfront the cost. If we don't spend it, I hear what you're saying, Jenny. I'm, I'm just feeling a little uncomfortable about all, like, about tearing apart every department's budget, but, and I, and I know from my own work that Reserve Funds are really important, because if you want to try to do something different, and you don't have a pot of money to do that, it's impossible to find it until the next year.
Counselor Lapinski was next, and then I'm going to recognize Counselor Forgie, unless you have information for us, but Counselor Lapinski?
Sure, so I have a quick question for Director Gilman, and then I have a comment. Director Gilman, how much money, I saw this is a line item to add to the Reserve Fund, there's money in there, correct?
No, this is not adding, it's keeping it status quo. I don't know if people read what I had sent out, but.
It appears maybe.
Generally, if a, a, department has a problem during the year, they'll come and ask for funds from the Reserve Fund this year. DPW came to City Council to request money for the flood at, on the river at the swimming facility. I also, in my memo, I said that more than likely I'm going to have to ask for fuel costs, because no one, no one anticipated the fuel costs.
That was going to be my question, was, if memory serves me correct, this is a fuel line, yes? I mean, well, in reserve.
Oh, I was, I was going to suggest that we were going to have to use it for fuel this year, and unless it changes, the price changes next year as well.
So how much of last year's Reserve Fund was used?
Of last year's?
Of the, of the sixty-five thousand that was appropriated, how much was used?
In last year's, gosh, I sent that out. I believe that we did, I'm confusing my years, because one year we used it all, the other we did not touch it. It all ebbs and flows with what's going on.
I see, well, I was, I was asking that question, because this motion was opened by Counselor Disorga, saying that it often doesn't get used and goes into free cash.
No, I sent out, yeah, if I can, if I could pull out a graph, it used to be three hundred thousand back in two thousand eight. Let me see if I can, oh, gosh. There's times when it's been fully utilized, there's times that only part of it is utilized. It's been the rare occasion that it wasn't touched, if that helps.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, so my comment is that the City Council has the power to appropriate money for things that come up during the year as needed upon a request from a department or the mayor, and so I understand that things come up, but we all well know at this point that the mayor can call a meeting in an emergency and ask us to vote on an item, so it doesn't seem to me like we have to have a Reserve Fund just because something might come up.
Director Gilman?
Well, part of that is that you have to, you can only raise and appropriate at certain times of the year. Once you set the tax rate, you can no longer raise and appropriate. So then you're going to a stabilization fund, which they don't like to see financial management. Right, for operating costs. So, that's all.
No, that's a good point. Counselor Jarvis?
Let's keep in mind, this is a rainy day fund, and the way that, the way that things are going nowadays, it's pouring. These, this, this, this seventy-five thousand is set aside, that the departments need it, they go to the mayor, there's discussion on it, and they bail out the department. It doesn't have to be called a special meeting, and as, as, as Director Gilman has pointed out to us, that once the tax rate is set, we are done. No more rainy day fund. That means other things in budgets get cut. People's protective clothing, people's, items like that get cut to help pay the bottom line. People get laid off if there's not a rainy day fund like this. It's seventy-five thousand dollars out of fifty-eight million.
I guess one point of clarification from anyone too, is if we don't spend it, if they don't spend it, it, it goes back to the general fund, correct? So it's there if we need it, and it's returned if we don't? Yes? Counselor Bullock?
And just, I found the document that Liz sent, and it, you know, it looks like the city has been relatively prudent in spending this over the last years. It looks like in 2021, we were budgeted a hundred thousand dollars, they spent, there was seventy-five thousand remaining. The year before, budgeted a hundred thousand in 2020, a hundred thousand remaining. Twenty eighteen, budgeted seventy-four two five, they spent out, they spent the whole thing, so it's, but it ebbs and flows, and I, it just doesn't, it seems like they're not just using it every year, and it's a budget item that's going to something else.
Counselor Gilmore? Thank you, Counselor Bullock.
Actually, I would like to direct a question to Counselor Forgie, because I think that, you know, as the Chair of Ways and Means, and as our Town Accountant, and as our First Mayor, I would really like to hear from her how this is spent, because it's a little bit unclear to me. If, if the Chair would, you know, if the Chair doesn't mind.
Nope, go right ahead.
That's fine, thank you. So I, I really think that this discussion originated with the fact that if we go back in the budgetary history of Greenfield, there were only a few ways we could put money aside. We just heard a figure of three hundred thousand dollars in a Reserve Fund at one time. There has been, the council has voted to put in place stabilization funds, so there's capital stabilization fund, and there's one for contracted services and things of that nature, with the understanding that the money is put aside for a specific purpose. This is a, I don't want to say it's a catch-all, it's not, it's a general purpose rainy day fund. Also, there, there is, I want to speak to also the idea that by law, we're not allowed to appropriate free cash. That's not legal for us to do. I think there's also some concern that whatever doesn't get used gets put towards our free cash figure. And I can't, I, I, you know, I, I cannot say, I will not speak for other people, but basically speaking, I think those items need to be addressed, and this, this is not the forum to do it in. But that's a brief, I think, history of how we, we came about to this discussion.
We have a motion on the floor to reduce this line to zero. Anytime, you know, any discussion, I mean, remember with stabilization, it takes two months, because we have to read it, and then have a second reading, and then, so that gets pushed, you know, nothing happens immediately when we're using stabilization money, it's a long process, just a reminder. Is there any other discussion on this motion? Counselor Almer?
I'll just say that this does, it doesn't seem like a, a fund that's been abused, it seems like it's been well managed, I don't see any reason to zero it out, so I'll be voting no on it.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Should we repeat what it means?
Yes.
The motion is to reduce this line to zero, so a yes vote would reduce this line by seventy-five thousand dollars. A no vote, at this point, would leave it as is. All those in favor?
I.
President Gilmore, how do you vote?
I vote no.
Are there any abstentions? We should have thirteen. Okay.
The motion fails.
The motion fails.
What's next?
Accounting?
Accounting. Now we get to say that this was a unanimous positive recommendation on this budget, as presented, and the total Assessors' budget is.
Accounting, sorry, Chris.
Accounting.
Next page, very next page.
We're just on accounting. We have an accounting salary and wage line, and we have an expenditure line for accounting. Is there any discussion? As presented?
This is, this is as presented.
Okay. Next would be independent town audit?
City audit. There were four in favor of this amount, and one opposed. There were four in favor of this amount, one opposed.
And, and one opposed to the amount?
The, 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 the request was to, the opposition was to lower it to $50,000. My understanding of what's going on right now is that we are locked in a three-year contract with a vendor. And in past years, our expense has been 60,000. And I have no reason to believe that that is going to change this year at all. So we need to vote, if, if, if people want to reduce that, we need to have a motion to do that.
We would if someone wanted to reduce it. Counselor Apianski, did you have?
May I ask a question of Director Gilman?
About this independent audit line?
Yeah.
Yes?
So Director Gilman, I just want to confirm, we have a three-year contract for $60,000, so we must appropriate that amount. Is that correct?
This, actually, the city council will be doing a re-engagement letter. However, you can't not have enough to have the audit. So you, you get what you pay for in an audit and different, different cities and towns have different requirements. If you have a lot of federal funds, you actually have to have two audits versus one audits for people who don't have, have under 750,000. So it would be, and the, and the auditors can also have suggestions for further audits. So you don't want to have it be, you don't want to strap your hands and you are in a year where you will be negotiating a price.
Thank you.
Sure, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. Counselor De Sorger?
May I ask a question of Director Gilman?
Sure.
What did you say that we received for federal funding? Did you just?
What I said was, is if a city or a town receives more than $750,000 in federal grants or federal funds, you must have a second audit that's called a CIFA. And so that's the distinction between different towns with audits. If you don't have a school department, like if you're in a regional school, Title I, Title II-A, SBA, IDEA, we, we blow, and with CDVG, we blow past the 750. So we are required to have the second audit.
Thank you.
People with, that have regional schools might not reach that $750,000.
And we're quite a bit past 750,000, would you say?
Oh, yeah.
I like.
Title I, just CDVG is, as you said, is over 500. Title I, Title II-A, and SBA IDEA, that's, that's close, that's close to 750 right there, and school lunch.
So a couple million maybe?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? I mean.
No, I'll, I'll go for it as is, that's fine.
As presented? Is there any other, it's presented as 60,000. Any other discussion? As presented. Assessors.
Now I can say it, right? Thank you.
Now you can do assessors.
Okay. This came through with a positive unanimous recommendation, so the budget is as is.
Is there any discussion? As is.
As is. As presented.
As presented.
All right.
Treasure collector. I just elevated here.
Treasure collector.
77.
77.
Well, I guess 78 is where the numbers are.
Again.
78.
Again, this budget was unanimous in Ways and Means, so the budget is being presented as is.
Is there any discussion? As is. Now tax title.
Tax title. Again, unanimous decision from the committee. So the budget is presented as is, $67,500.
Is there any discussion on this?
I, I'm sorry, I can't find it.
Oh.
Page 80.
Page 80.
No, no discussion.
As presented.
As presented.
Okay, are we, we're not supposed to vote on any lines. We're, we're now moving correctly? All right. Now we're on operation support. Do we have to vote on any line up till now? No, we're good, right? So now we're on operation support. Counselor Forgji, legal.
Right.
79.
Yep, got it. This was also unanimous, came out of committee with a positive recommendation. And the total, there are two totals to be considered. There is total legal labor attorney for 95,000, and there is total legal city attorney for 100,000. So the budget is presented as is.
Is there any discussion? As presented. Human resources. Office.
Go back, I'm sorry.
Page 82.
Yep. Thank you. Again, this was a unanimous positive recommendation. Human resources, total bottom line, 250, 446, as presented.
Any discussion? As presented. Greenfield Technology Department.
Again, this budget was unanimous positive recommendation out of Ways and Means. It is for $622,118, as presented.
Any discussion? As presented. Total operational support. Do we have to say as presented?
There should be no change to that.
As presented, there's no change.
As presented.
Wait, where is it?
Those are the total of all of those we just.
If you totaled all those lines, we didn't change any, so it's as presented. Licensing and registration. Town clerk.
City clerk is in the, the town clerk is over here.
Okay.
I'm sure you.
That budget received a unanimous positive recommendation. The total city clerk budget for 166, 350, as presented.
Any discussion?
I just, I, I just have to say, I cannot believe that this office does the amount of work they do on that budget. I wish we could increase it, but I can't.
Same.
That's a very good sentiment because I, I think.
I would second it if I could.
I think we could go around this room and, and maybe we'd all agree on something for a change. Sorry. All right, let's, let's move on as presented.
Yep. Elections, unanimous positive recommendation, budget 29,660, as presented.
Any discussion? As presented. Board of Registars.
That was also a unanimous positive recommendation for $17,500, as presented.
Any discussion? As presented. Licensing Commission.
Licensing Commission, that is unanimous as well. So the total amount for Licensing Commission is 39,623, as presented.
Any discussion? As presented. Total license and registrars, 253, 133, is that what we're at? As presented. Land use and development.
Conservation Commission, that was unanimous, total amount of $600, as presented.
Discussion as, Counselor Bottomley?
Sorry, I'm flipping back and forth. I just had a question. I thought something came up that the Conservation Commission had requested an agent, a full-time agent? Was that as opposed to half-time?
Well, this is the, this would be the Conservation Commission.
Okay, and that's what I was trying to figure out where that was.
Right, that's, this is an appointed board.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not compensated.
No.
Okay.
No, good clarification. Are, are you good with that, Counselor Bottomley?
Planning.
The person, the person that handles the Conservation Commission is part of the planning board. So the, planning department, sorry, not board, planning department. So that money for that position would be in planning. Planning Board.
Right. This was unanimous as well. The total budget presented was 115, 352.
Wait a minute, we, we should be at $600.
Oh, I have the department on.
Planning Board. We're still, we did Conservation Commission, Planning Board.
I'm sorry, I stand corrected. Planning Board, $600, as presented.
Any discussion? As presented. Zoning Board of Appeals.
$600, as presented, unanimous.
Any discussion? As. You know, as presented.
I like that word.
Planning and community development, salary and wages expenditures.
Correct, and that was.
We're back on 92 now?
What, what page are we on?
93.
92, 93.
Did you send these out to everyone? Okay. I just have cheat notes. I didn't know if everyone had them. They're just, they keep me online.
This was a unanimous positive recommendation as well, so the budget is 115, 352, as presented.
We all understand what we're talking about there, which is planning, community development.
Can I ask a question? Is this where the, the new employee that John, Counselor Bottomley, was talking about is?
Oh.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So Counselor Bottomley, did you have any questions on that position? Because when you inquired before, this is where it would have landed.
I was just trying to remember from Ways and Means what the, the discussion was. Was it, did they have a part-time position? I know they've been losing. They haven't been able to keep that position, so I've just been, was confused on whether it was remaining part-time or if they were trying to, had requested adding another to make a full-time?
It was, yes, it was.
It was.
It was.
Yep.
Director Gilman, did you want to?
Yeah, it was requested, but it remained at part-time.
Okay. Thank you, John. That's where, Counselor Bottomley. Is there any other discussion on planning and community development? As presented. Total land use and development, 117, 152.
So just to be clear, sorry, they didn't increase it from part-time to full-time position?
Is that correct?
That's correct.
It's still part-time.
I think that's unfortunate. I wish I could increase it.
Yeah, you know, anytime we're having a discussion, if any of you feel in that way, don't, don't shy away from saying, I, I think we should have gone with the full-time, you know, just because you want, your positive information is, is all good. So just, you know, as I throw things at our clerk. All right. Other general government.
Central services.
Town hall maintenance. That's all blank.
A bio break?
What break?
It is 10:44. I'm just trying to give you my thought on this. I imagine we are not going to get through public safety. I imagine that we are.
I want to keep going.
Yes.
I'm, I'm not in favor of the recess.
So.
If you give me three minutes, I'll be right back, or I'll just go and.
I, I don't have permission.
Just go, sir.
Your mother, keep going.
Honey, I didn't even know where you went.
I'm gonna step out as well, just so people know that I'm not here.
We're not truckers here.
I, I guess we are taking a moment in time.
They're men, they'll be right back.
We, we are taking a, we are taking a quick recess because I wouldn't have a quorum pretty soon. Do not make comments in the chat, even though they're positive. In most cases, it's against open meeting law. So please, no comments in the chat. And as I was saying, town hall maintenance is blank on mine, so.
So I, I can't even find where it is on the agenda, let alone in the book.
Other general government.
That's just a heading.
Right. But the first thing I have is town hall maintenance, salary, wages, and expenditures.
And the first thing I have is.
And then it goes to central service because it's central maintenance now.
We don't have town hall maintenance.
I don't either.
Central services, that's where we should be. For 309, 397. All of it's been.
Okay, so.
Didn't we put that all in one?
Central services, maintenance?
Hold on one second. Okay. This is central services.
Okay, so this is as presented.
319,307, is that correct, Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
As presented. Any discussion on central services? As presented. Now, central maintenance.
As presented. Yes.
As presented. Any discussion on central maintenance? As presented. Energy Department. Oh, Counselor De Sorger, I'm sorry.
Just for next, just for next year, if we had this in order how it was in the book, that would be good for all, you know, just a suggestion, just a suggestion for next year. I, I think everybody did a great job on everything. I'm just saying, so that we, we actually know that where we are, that's all. Silent now.
No, I'm, I'm right with you.
So for energy?
Energy Department, yes.
Okay, it's unanimous, so it's as presented.
938,535? As presented. Any discussion? Are we not all together?
Oh, okay. It's page 104, 5, and 6.
So what page?
104.
104, 105, 106.
I'll, I'll, I'll follow your lead anytime, even if you step on my toes. Anything on that? Are you with us now? We're on the Energy Department, was 938,535. Yes? Any discussion? As presented. That brings us to public safety.
Can I make a, I, I'd like to continue this tomorrow, if possible, because I don't feel like we're going to get through all of it anyway. And I think that this would be a good place to stop.
Two people out.
I would, I would like to second Counselor Toranzo's motion.
Well, okay, so we have a motion that's been made and seconded, so now we can discuss it, like any motion. Oh, we have to have a specific motion.
I guess I would be motioning to adjourn till tomorrow night.
Um, nope.
At what time?
Nope, there's a specific motion.
Oh.
That's legal.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
I just buried it.
So just read that motion and then Counselor Toranzo can say so moved.
We have to find this motion. We have to find this motion.
Did we email it out?
And if you make the motion take longer than the discussion we would otherwise have, it'll be.
They were all, would have been here, right? Don't panic, we're fine.
Yes.
So the motion would need to be that the council adjourns to a date certain of March, May 19, 2022, 6:30 PM at the Johns-on Community Center for the meeting to continue where it left off.
I move to adjourn to a time certain of May 19, 2022 at 6:30 PM at the Johns-on to continue from this point that we are at right now on this agenda.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. There's discussion, and I want everyone to be very honest with this discussion. I'm not coaching. Counselor Jarvis?
I'll be honest with you. I'm not going to be here tomorrow. This is a very important part of the budget to me. I have pre-arrangements where I am not going to be out, get out of them, and I feel that we should move forward. There's other counselors that are not going to be here, and this was a short notice. This was less than 48 hours that we got the email that there was be an extension possibly tomorrow. If we're going to extend it, let's extend it and give us all a few days to make, to rearrange our schedules because I'm sorry, some of us have lives and some of us have schedules that we need to adhere to. And I'm sorry that some counselors are shaking their heads no, because they disagree with me.
Counselor Healy?
I'd like to comment as well. I mean, I work my schedule around this meeting. I've already been to two meetings this week, and I have work commitments tomorrow that are going to prevent me, and this is important to me. I want to be a part of this. I have things to say about this. I don't want to miss this, so, you know, I prefer that this get pushed early next week.
We could have some time restrictions on budgets, but I don't want to go there yet. Let's keep this discussion moving. Counselor Toranzo?
I have no problem with the date changing, but we received this notice last week before any of the executive session that we were going to have a second day marked off, I believe. I, and that's fine. If we want to pick a different day, I'm totally up for it. I've been to three meetings now this week, two. I think it's important.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Sorry, go ahead.
Counselor Gilmore?
I was going to say, I would rather not take this up right now because it's just about my bedtime, and I know everyone else is tired. I also hear that there are some counselors who were not aware of this change. I knew, we had talked about this at committee chairs at the beginning of the month, that's always the second Tuesday. So I was already prepared, I had it on my calendar, that we were going to have a continuation tomorrow night if needed, and I expected that it was going to be needed, and especially after Monday's meeting, I knew that we were going to have a lot of public comment. But if other counselors would rather set up a special meeting, I would be amenable to that, but I really want to hear from Kathy because I know we have a deadline. We have to vote this budget by a specific date, and that, I, I don't have that date in my head right now. So if we could ask Clerk Scott to elucidate, maybe, I think that would be helpful.
Ask who? I'm sorry.
Clerk Scott, that was to you.
So I don't have the paperwork.
Sorry, Kathy, I expect you to know all the things.
Sure, no problem. I don't have the date in front of me. The date is either the 27th or the 28th, but I don't, don't have it in front of me. We do need, if you're not going to meet tomorrow, we do need 48 hours for posting. Even if the meeting is adjourned to continue to a date certain, we still have to post it 48 hours prior to the meeting.
Counselor DeSorger?
I think that, two things. First, I think that, that we should adjourn. Some of, personally, I don't think we should be making this decision right now at night. I had surgery yesterday, and my back is killing me. That's on a personal level. As far as the scheduling, I was sure it was going to be this week because it was posted for tomorrow night. I'm not available after Tuesday, after Monday of next week, so, but I knew in the calendar that the date was for tomorrow, so that's what I had planned for in my life. I'm supposed to be going down and visiting my daughter and the twins.
Let me just make an unpopular side of this. Do you feel that if we look at where we are, we've had, we have department heads that are here that were up and worked all day, we've got people that are here, if we get through Police, which is our next piece here, okay, if we get through Police, it might, after that, is there a lot of discussion on the Ways and Means after Public Safety, after Police? Is there, is there a lot of discussion? Is there a way that we could look at this Police budget now? This is my opinion. I am not talking as the chair. I'm asking a question. Can we, we go through this and try to, because once we're through Public Safety, which is major, we have school, we have, you know, other, it's going to go quicker than this is, but as far as Counselor Healy and Counselor Jarvis' concerns of not being here, but they would like to be involved in the Police and Public Safety portion, I'm just asking the question, is, it's only 11. Can we get this done in an hour? I don't know. Can we get it done in a half hour? I just, I'm just, I don't know.
Counselor Forgé is just looking at her notes for the other departments after the Police to see if it was unanimous or if there was discussion on any of them.
Counselor Mayo, you haven't spoken. I just don't.
I, all I can say is, I just found out that we were going to have a date set for, for tomorrow. I made arrangements for tomorrow. I can do it tomorrow. I can also tell you that people don't make good decisions if they're, if they're tired and in pain. So I think it's a good idea that we adjourn before we take up such a contentious, the thing that was probably the most contentious of the night is the thing that's right before us, the thing that we need to be clear-headed about. And seeing as though we don't make decisions when we're tired and in pain, I'd rather that we set, we, we call it a night and pick it up tomorrow at a time that has already been, people have already been notified, and we just go from there. That is my opinion.
The date.
But as a person, as a person who's been in negotiations, contract negotiations, many times, people don't make decisions right when they're tired. And this, and this, some council members sitting here tonight have said exactly that. So let's do the right thing and, and call it a night.
Does, looking forward for Counselor Healy and Counselor Jarvis, because there's still, Counselor Jarvis will still be a counselor, a date that appears to work would be the 23rd. Which is a Monday.
I'm away for work all of next week.
No.
Excuse me, Vice President, Gwen, I do have to say I really wanted to be at one of our really important meetings, and there was no advocacy for me. There was no one that advocated for me on the leadership team or on this council for me to be at that meeting, and it was a city council meeting, and it was an executive session, and no one fought for me to be in there, and I even sent a letter to every single counselor, which no one responded, and no one called me within 24 hours of that meeting. So I feel like we have a double standard going on here.
Counselor Lapinski?
I just want to say, I actually called President Gilmore and told her that I thought it was the wrong decision for exactly that reason, and I completely agree with you that I think this is a double standard, and the bottom line is that if we abandon, I, I can accept that we had a second date planned. What I cannot accept is that we would abandon that plan to accommodate certain counselors when we would not abandon a similar plan for, I might add, a bogus executive session because it seems like there's favoritism going on here. So I will support a motion to adjourn if it's for tomorrow, and otherwise, I am totally opposed to it, and I think it's questionable as to whether it's even legal to intentionally discriminate against counselors you disagree with.
Counselor Jarvis?
I'd just like to point out that I'm looking at my email that I received on the 17th, pointing out that the meeting was going to happen tomorrow for an extension. The 17th. Today is the 19th. That's when my email on my city computer went out. I'm not looking for any favoritism. I'm just stating a fact that tomorrow wouldn't work for me, and I had two days' notice. That is it. That's all I was stating, and that, that, that the Public Safety, not just the Police Department, but the Fire Department, and EMS, and everything else is very important to me. Two days' notice.
Counselor Gilmore?
I want to say, Ashley Ed, tonight, it's the 18th, so you had one day's notice, and I apologize because I thought that everybody found out sooner than this. And to Counselor Lapinski's point, this isn't about favoring individuals, and I think, I think that Dan would agree with me that, you know, in council leadership, we can't talk about like whether or not we're friends with Ed, or we're friends with Doug, or we're friends with Ginny. We have to look at who is representing the different precincts in town, and if we have two or three precincts that have no representation, they do have their at-large counselors, but the at-large counselors are also getting a lot more emails and a lot more phone calls. So that's something we have to weigh also. I think that Counselor Mayo was right that we shouldn't be making these decisions that we're, while we're tired, but I think that it's very important that we get as many counselors as possible who can be present at the same time. I am available any day next week. I would rather not be Tuesday, but I will make it work if it has to be Tuesday. And Counselor Bottomley, I want you to know that Counselor DeSorger did go to bat for you, so somebody did speak. Someone did ask for you to be present.
Counselor Ricketts?
I just want to be mindful that we don't discuss if we're going to stay until midnight.
Yeah, right.
Understood.
Okay, that's all.
Counselor Forgé?
Whatever, whatever everybody agrees to is fine with me. If it's next week, I'll have to come in virtually.
Tomorrow is the 19th, which is what was in that memo. It was suggested that another possibility would be the 23rd, which is Monday. It seemed to appeal to more people. I have, it's all what you want to do. I am, I am just trying to get this meeting moving, and I'm just trying to make good decisions. I am not trying to have any confrontation with any of you. I just want to get this done. It's, it's up to this, you know, committee, council, to decide what you want to do. If, if we're going to go to tomorrow, then, then we know we're going to lose two counselors. Monday, is there, you know, are there people that can't make Monday? I don't know. You know, I just want to try to have 13 of you participate. Counselor Lapinski?
We're not going to have 13. If we're, if we're here on Monday, we lose myself, we lose Counselor Bullock, we potentially lose Counselor DeSorger. I, I would like to call the question on the motion that I seconded. And request a roll call.
What was, what was, what was the motion?
The motion was Counselor Toranzo's motion.
Tomorrow pancakes, I can't remember.
Move it to tomorrow at 6:30.
Oh.
So that's the motion that I'm calling the question on.
Do we have a second on calling the motion?
Second.
I believe that's Counselor Mayo.
Yes.
We're, we're voting to call the question. If you're not thinking we're in a place to debate, then, then determine if you want the question called.
Yes.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor DeSorger? Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Lapinski?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Toranzo?
Yes.
Does the Vice President wish to vote?
Yes, I do want to vote. No.
Okay. The motion to call the question passes. The motion on the adjournment to a date certain of 5/19/2022 at 6:00 PM.
6:30.
Sorry, correction, correct, 6:30 PM to the Johns-on Community Center to take the agenda up where the last action was completed. Counselor Jarvis?
No.
Counselor DeSorger?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
President Gilmore?
Come back to me, please.
Counselor Lapinski?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
No.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
No.
Counselor Toranzo?
Yes.
President Gilmore?
Sorry, I feel like I have to abstain.
Does the Vice President wish to vote?
Abstain.
The motion passes by majority.
So the meeting's adjourned?
Not yet. We haven't adjourned the meeting.
The motion was to adjourn and. Yeah, it's adjourned. That's it.
Yes.
So we need to make.
We've already done that.
Yes, motion.
We are adjourned at 11, 11:00 PM.
Adjourned at 11, 11:00 PM, continued until.
Adjourned to a date certain.
6:30 PM.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, starting with Public Safety.